I've got Nancy I, just probably going to do a bit of correcting as I'm proceeding. This is my first commission meeting to start. But I have the honor of doing a couple of major things. First is actually to make a proclamation. And I think I'm gonna, well, I won't be at the mic if I do it. I guess I'll head and do it seated. It's a proclamation honoring the fallen police chief of Rainier, Oregon, and supporting the city of Rainier as it heals from the terrible tragedy. Whereas the city of Rainier, Oregon, has suffered an unfathomable loss with the recent murder of its police chief, and whereas fallen chief Ralph Painter served the citizens of Rainier as a most valuable public servant, and whereas law enforcement is an honorable, hard-working profession that diligently seeks to make our communities more livable, and whereas there is no greater sacrifice an officer can make for their community than give their life, and whereas the murder of a police officer shocks the very soul of our community, our government, and the very freedoms the officers have sworn to protect, and whereas the impact of this tragedy on the chief's family, friends, department, and community is immeasurable, now I therefore, Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, along with this city commission and the citizens of Oregon City, extend our heartfelt condolences to the city of Rainier, Oregon, its staff, the officer's family, and its citizens. We mourn the loss of Rainier's most valuable public servants and pray for healing and hope in this time of need. And witness thereto, I have set forth my hand on this 19th day of January 2011. And to that honorable profession, I'm in a wonderful position to give the oath of office to a new police officer. And Chief, can I join me? Sir? May I swear in the office? I state your name?
I, now I said.
Do solemnly swear that I uphold the law and support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Do solemnly swear that I will...
Uphold the law and support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully promoting my duties as police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
While faithfully promoting my duties as police officer for Oregon City.
Given this 19th day of January 2011, you have subscribed and welcome to be for me on this date. Thank you very much.
Matt is actually our 40th officer. He's taken us a while to get him here. We're really pleased to have him in. He's also, his wife Melissa's here, his mom and dad Catherine and Michael are here. And I know his grandparents are here too, if I remember their names, it's Howard and Joanne, right?
Correct.
Awesome. Matt comes just from Weston, Oregon. He's a police officer in Weston, Oregon, for three years before he came over. He lives in Oregon City, which is always nice. And he's a graduate of Western Oregon University, he has a bachelor's degree from Western Oregon University. So we're very, very proud to have Matt onboard. We've heard a lot of wonderful things about him, and he's going to be a great addition to our police department. So welcome him onboard.
So, since you've been our chief, how many new officers have we sworn? Can you do that, top hand?
I would imagine probably five or six. And some of those are positions that, they're not all additions to the police department. We had two positions were available through federal cops grants, which were paid for entirely by the federal government. We had one TriMed officer, which is paid for entirely by TriMed. And we converted one of our non-sform positions to a full-time position. So we've been a little bit innovative in how we've gotten there, but we are finally at the 40%. We're getting close to the state average for cities our size. It's been a long trip, but it's been very, very...
I wanted to say our police chief has been extremely innovative in many ways. We now have these overlapping shifts that during the critical hours of service, we actually have more officers on duty than we did before. I believe that's correct?
We do. We do. We actually, we were able to double our shifts from nine o'clock at night to three o'clock in the morning by going to 10-hour shifts from eight-hour shifts. And we've been a little bit more creative in how we've used those officers during that overlap. We've been able to address specific problems in neighborhoods and different issues that come before us, and we've been a lot more proactive than we have. So it's been a great ability for us with the extra officers to address those problems.
Well, thank you for all of your work. We appreciate it. I believe we're going to have some good library things before us, if I'm not incorrect. Our library board's annual report, I think, is going to be presented to us. Maureen, who will be presenting it? Well, I can see who's going to be presenting it.
You can introduce yourself there.
I want you to introduce yourselves, although I could do it. So this is a report coming from the board itself.
I'm starting off with the library board report. Harriet Shul, I'm the member-at-large and the current chair of the Oregon City Library Board. I do live in the county, however, about five miles out, but spend about three-fourths of my life, I think, doing something in the city. This will be my eighth year on the library board, and I do want to say something about the growth and the change in the library board over the last number of years. They have gotten much more proactive, and with the addition of Maureen Cole, it has been a definite benefit to the city. Because before, well, the staff, we were kind of in a just kind of whole basis. And now that we have a full-time library director who can focus her attention upon the library, we're making progress. It may not be obvious, since we've had to move into the Carnegie, but we're making progress in policies at the library, in staff, training, and expectations, and a lot of other things. It's been great to see it grow. Basically, we're there to support and for the library director to bounce their thoughts off of. We've spent some time, for example, working with her on the library behavior policy, on what some of the rules would be. It hadn't been changed in a very long time. And, believe it or not, at the meeting last Wednesday, they reviewed the internet use policy, and they realized a number of things, and comments were made from the board members. And when it goes back to the attorney and to some other things, it will be brought back to us for review once again. Ironically, my first meeting as chair, I missed because I was up at KCI clinic with my husband, who was having eye surgery. So I'm trying to play catch-up, and guess what happened based on the minutes? When we were in the process of knowing for the, I don't know how many times, that we were going to be leaving Danielson's and such, the library members, some of us on the board, took a field trip to Lebanon and Albany to see their new libraries that they had done and find out how they had accomplished it. I was especially envious of Albany's library, and I haven't figured out how to replicate it. What was it, four million, seven million?
Seven million. A donor.
A donor, one.
Jeez.
One donor. Seven million, and they were able to renovate a building. That was just remarkable in how they did it with this open walk-through, and even though it was on the second floor, it was very practical. Our main project that will be coming up, of course, since our last one didn't quite work, the Eastham School, will be helping Moe as being a sounding board for public input. And I think most of you may have seen the first step in that in the ad in the Oregon City News today. The city of Oregon City requests for information on suitable sites. Tentatively planned, we will be helping with an open house for a public hearing of some type to, we haven't figured out the format yet, but we're working on it, on allowing people to come and give us their thoughts on where, what it should include, and any other aspect that we can think of for the library. We have two new members on our library board. We have Don Wright and Claire Kellogg, who I got to, I missed their first meeting too, unfortunately. But we're moving along, and we're at full stead. And you have any questions about the library board or comments, we're going to be bugging you regularly. We make sure that you have library as a high priority, because being in the Carnegie is a problem. Some people are satisfied with it, but people who like to look through shelves, to kind of debate what they want to read, people that want to come in and use computers, there are a lot of things that, it's just too small for the size of a community. And it has to be a priority that we move on and up and out. And the library board will be doing everything possible that we can to help Moe and to you solve that issue. Any questions?
That's great. We welcome your constant bugging.
I don't have anybody making requests this week. I thank you, Harriet.
Well, I'm here representing the Friends of the Oregon City Library as president. I'm beginning my third year, and I have a position on the library board because I'm the president of the Friends, but I was on the library board myself, in my own right, for seven years. So I know a lot that's been going on. But I wanted to bring to you and keep in your mind what the Friends of the Library have been doing and will continue to do. And I can see four different areas that we do that in: fundraising, outreach, support, and advocacy. And in fundraising, this past year, that we had a book sale from a lot of the books that were culled from the library and worked in the Danielson area. Harriet was the spearhead for that, and I helped her. And we had lots of other volunteers. If I don't, I need to say lots and lots, thanks to all our volunteers. And we raised about $3,000 from that endeavor, and it was well worth the energy for that. Another way that we did some fundraising this year was in the farmer's market. We had volunteers go every Saturday and take books during the summer farmer's market, and we raised around $3,000 on those Saturdays, and we got to do a lot of talking to people. And in the bookstore itself, we're so happy to have the bookstore. It's such a joy to have that good look and to make Oregon City look better, just because it's in the front of that building and not empty like it was for a few years before that. Karen Mori, who's here in the back of the room, is our bookstore manager, and we're so proud of the great job she does and all the jobs that all of our volunteers do. And we have a partnership in the last year, just over the last year, with Three Rivers Art Guild, and it's working out very well, and we're very happy with it. And we've raised around, in the neighborhood of around $15,000 there.
Wow.
And then in our membership dues, that we raised around $3,000. And we'd like to let you know that we have approximately $70,000 in a building fund, because half of everything that's raised at the bookstore and the farmer's market goes towards our building fund. So we've got something to do something in this new library that we're asking for. We also see the bookstore and the farmer's market as outreach. And we've talked to the people that volunteer and all of those, talked to many people, let them know what's going on in the library, let them know what's going on in the bookstore. And so we see that as outreach. I myself did a little outreach, in the sense that I was on the Carnegie Task Force at the end of 2009, beginning of 2010, and represented the library, interest of the library board. We also see part of our work as support. So we had staff and volunteer appreciation in April. And then while the library was closed down for public use, we had a staff luncheon in recognition of all the work that they did during that very difficult time, moving everything from one building to another. We're also doing some ongoing funding of library projects, and this year especially, we put money into cultural passes and were available for children's programming. We spent money on children's programming and support last summer. And this year that we're continuing and being supportive of the adult program, both getting it out to the public and hopefully some financial support too. And then lastly, advocacy. So we're been at many of the commission meetings in the last year. And so we regularly meet with our library director and help support her and get her ideas across to other people. And we would like to be advocates again tonight and ask that you consider the library and the needs of the library very seriously and put them on a very high, on your goal level of getting a library this year. And so we appreciate the time that you gave us to talk. Thank you.
I would like to add that next year, there will be, in effect, three reports. The Oregon City Library Foundation should be totally up and running. We have been illegally established, not illegally, legally established. And we're just in the organizational phase with the bylaws and the first filings, and we will be out. So watch out, anybody that's interested in the library, because we will asking you for time and money to help build a new library. And the difference between, in case, a lot of people have asked me this, why do you need a foundation if you have the Friends? The foundation raises money, they get donors. That's simply the purpose. Buildings. The Friends are supporting programs and individuals, and we raise money for the programming, not for the building. And that's the major difference. There are some other small ones. But the foundation is not a membership organization. The Friends is a membership organization, and a foundation is a fundraising organization. And if anybody would like to talk to either Linda or I, we're having an organizational meeting in two weeks, our next one. And we would welcome you. You could come and visit with us if you'd like.
She's speaking of the foundation.
The foundation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're doing an awesome job.
I'm taking this opportunity to introduce another agenda item that this, this is segue as for, I indicated to our recorder that I was going to do this. But not too long ago, at the library, we had the poet laureate give some presentations of her poetry, that's Pauline Peterson. Was that supported by the Friends, or is that out of your own budget?
No, that was a small, that was a small grant by the, that association, that humanities.
Okay. Well, I had the opportunity of hearing her speak, give some poetry readings at a poetry reading program that they have at the Coffee Rush on Monday. And I, for a specific reason, I had invited her to come to speak if she could. She had a commitment, and she was disappointed that she couldn't. She was going to try to get somebody to come, and I don't know if there's anybody here that she identified. I didn't get a message, so I assume she wasn't able to identify anybody. And if that's the case, I'm going to go ahead and indicate what the poem she read and the significance of it. But the reason for the poetry reading was, it was on, and then, I'll come up with it in a minute, yeah, it was on, in 1914, January 17th, that William Stafford was born. William Stafford is a person who was born in Kansas, and then he moved to Arfaire County. And he was named poet laureate of the United States in 1970. And in 1970, he was named by Governor Tom McCall as the poet laureate of Oregon, served in that position from 1975 to 1990. He passed away in 1993, but his, on that particular day, there were readings of his poetry throughout the state, and readings occurred in Oregon City. But she gave one in particular, and I'm going to read it, and then I'm going to explain the special significance of it in terms of another thing that we should remember. It's a writing that he did in a series of poetry that was published as An Oregon Message in 1987, and it's called Serving with Gideon. I'll let you look up in the Old Testament who Gideon was, but...
He's the guy that puts all the Bibles in hotel rooms?
No. He was one of, in the Torah of the Old Testament, he was one of the, he was one of the judges in that period of time, and was identified as being instrumental in doing actions that resulted in the Israelites getting out of Egypt, in the plain Egypt. But he says here, and it's talking about him, him the poet laureate, not him Gideon. "Now I remember, in our town, the drugist prescribed Coca-Cola, mostly in tapered glasses to us, and to the elevator man in a paper cup, so he could drink it elsewhere, because he was black. And now I remember the legion gambling in the back room, no women, but girls, old boys who ran the town. They were generous to their sons and the sons of France. And of course, I was almost one. I remember winter light closing and great blue fists closing eastward along the street, and the dark then, deep as war, arced over a radio show called The 30s and the great old US Today. Looked down stars, I was almost one of those boys. My mother was folding her handkerchief, the library seed and spark, right and wrong arced, and carefully I walked with my cup toward the elevator man." He was writing about his, an experience he had when he was 15 years old. The experience he was writing about at that particular age, when he was 15, was the year that Dr. Martin Luther King was born. And of course, it was on January 15th that he was born. And so I just wanted to take this occasion to recognize both Dr. Martin Luther King, many of us in this room, of course, saw his great efforts and ultimately successful efforts in the civil rights movement in this country, and at the same time, recognizing William Stafford, a national poet laureate, who was an Oregonian. Thank you.
Doug, could I follow up with one thing?
You please.
Because this is right on topic. In Oregon, we do a whole celebration for William Stafford in January, all around the state. And so there's a whole listing. We can't all do it on his birthday, so all around the state, there are different dates. And we will have a program at the library on January 29th, Saturday night, which is in direct conflict with the Chamber Dinner, but if you're not going to that, please come to the library. I'll plug both those things. And Pauline Peterson will not be there, because she's already been to our library, but Kate Gray from Plaquemines Community College, poet and a teacher up there, and a couple other people will be there. And everybody is welcome. And in the afternoon, from four to six, there will be a free poetry workshop given by another local artist, poet Christine Delay. So if you want any information about that, please let us know at the library, and everybody's welcome. Thank you for letting me put in that plug. It seemed appropriate.
Thank you. And with that, it's now for citizens' comments, and do we have citizens that want to make comments? I'm sure we do. Tom O'Brien. And Damon Mayby, if you want to come up also at the same time. Introduce yourself, if you would, and whether you live in Oregon City or not.
Tom O'Brien, Oregon City. I wanted to publicly come before you and thank the commission, thank the police department, thank the city manager and city staff for the wonderful responsiveness that they've given to the South End Road hazardous intersection at Gentry. The improvements that have been made around that curve have gone a long way to help traffic safety in that particular area, particularly the island that was put in within the last week or so. I've noticed that not only are people actually negotiating the corner safely, but they're staying on their own side of the road. Imagine that. But I thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayby.
Damon Mayby, city of Oregon City. I find myself looking at the agenda this evening and being at odds with many of the items there, and am concerned that that might be the case for the next couple of years. Because of that, I'd like to withdraw my application to the planning commissions, so that I can feel free to speak freely at any event, not be concerned that people would take that as a planning commission position, whether or not I'm on. Anyway, it's just, you'll be hearing a lot from me, I suspect, over the next few years, and I want to speak my mind clearly and unencumbered.
If I might ask you to reconsider, I don't, I think a planning commission member should feel as free, as long as it's not really dealing with issues that the planning commission has dealt with, and then you'll be dealing with as a commission. You should be free, feel as free as anybody else as an individual to speak up. And I would, if I may, I'd like you not to withdraw your position. Am I making that request?
I agree with that.
I would agree with that. That's a very good try, Damon Mayby, but...
I really, I really don't think I see any conflict personally.
Well, my concern is that my opinions might taint any decisions that are made by the planning commission, should I be part of it. And, you know, I don't want to ruin, you know, the good work that that commission does by...
I don't see the issues at hand would be issues that would be that much of an issue for the planning commission. But it's your choice. My preference is you don't do so. I mean, one of my first acts was to appoint members to the commissions, and before they've done anything, they're getting robbed. It's going to make me look real bad, Damon.
Think about that for a minute, Damon.
Well, it's been two weeks. I haven't heard anything, so I just assumed it was a kind of a empty gesture on my part, so, but...
He hasn't heard anything? You got, we got the right mailing address for him? I signed a piece of paper.
I think you better talk to Nancy.
Well, I will leave my offer on the table, should it be necessary, but I'll, I won't, I'll just step back then, I guess.
Please do. Yeah, you have, and you will have then, I'm sorry. I guess I'm saying that wrong. No, he has been.
Well, I don't know that.
Tonight.
Tonight, so... It makes me even look worse, you withdraw before I've made the appointment.
See, that makes it simple. I'll just get out of here.
That's good.
Is it Joni Taylor Fido, is that right, to speak next? And also Sharon Murphy, if you could come up at the same time? Did I pronounce your name okay?
I, yes and no, yes.
Well, you introduce yourself and tell us where you're from.
She's from Fido.
I'm from Fido. Fido was really part of my name. I'm Joni Taylor. I'm the executive director of Fido.
Oh, that was not in capital letters here.
It's okay.
Okay.
And I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. Fido was located in Oregon City. I actually live in Lake Grove, so I hope it's okay that I'm here tonight.
Absolutely.
And really, I'm here tonight to support Sharon and Paws and the things that she wants to present to the commission, basically talking about cats and overpopulation and the issues that the citizens of Oregon City specifically face, as well as the greater community at large. And I'm feeling rather awkward, because I figured I would fill in whatever Sharon didn't mention, but a couple of the things I wanted to talk about was that, I mean, it's basically cats... cats, community, and the economy. Because of the economy, there are more cats who are homeless, because their families, their owners are not able to support them, whether they just don't have the money to buy groceries for themselves and their pets, or whether they lose their homes. There are a lot of issues out there. Also, people kind of think that cats can sort of fend for themselves and eat cats and mice and don't really need to have a home.
But just for clarity, cats don't actually eat cats.
Oh, is that what I said? I hope you're not recording that. Anyway, one of the things that I wanted to present are statistics, and that is an unspayed female cat, her mate, and all of her, of their offspring statistically producing two litters per year, which is pretty low, and with 2.8 surviving kittens per litter, can total a number of, a total of 12 cats produce, how about that? Produce a total of 12 cats in one year. In three years, 376 cats. In five years, 11,801 cats. In seven years, 370,092 cats. And it just gets more unbelievable, the numbers, exponentially as the years pass on. But the point that I'm trying to make is that cats are very fertile. And so, and then that just creates the need that we have for shelter, housing, the things that Sharon wants to talk about. And I think the solutions are pretty straightforward. Education for the community, for the owners, and for people in the community to understand that the needs of cats and the realities of these numbers, and the need for spay and neuter. Support for the families, which Fido does provide through our dog and cat food bank, food for those families in Oregon City and really the greater Portland metro area. And the other challenge facing us all, but certainly these families who love their animals but have to make really hard economic decisions, is there aren't, there isn't space for them, that when they call the local shelters, the local humane societies, the county shelters, they're all full. And so what do you do? And that's what Sharon is here tonight to tell you, that we have an idea of what we can do.
I am. My name's Sharon Murphy, and I'm a resident of Happy Valley. I am the founder and director of PAWS Animal Shelter, which is in West Lynn. And being an animal shelter, we get somewhere between 600 and 1,000 phone calls every month from people wanting to surrender their animals. They found an animal, the neighbors moved away and left an animal. What has surprised me over the 11 years that we've been there, we opened in 99, is that the majority of our phone calls come from Oregon City. There's a lot of sadness, and it breaks my heart that we in our 640 square feet do not have the resources to take in every animal that calls. So we give them our best advice, but a lot of them, a lot of animals end up being abandoned, a lot of animals aren't spayed and neutered that need to. What we're willing to do for Oregon City and what we propose is to develop, that we would be willing to develop a plan for Oregon City to organize spay and neuter, to provide shelter and care, to find new homes, educate the public in a way that people will want to help, to provide supervised community service projects for the local schools, as well as those in need of repaying their debt to society. And the list can go on and on, as to what we as a community, including myself in Oregon City, could do if we just had the resources. What we would need in return from Oregon City to be able to provide resources for all of the homeless animals in your limits is space to do so. But otherwise, we would be willing to be self-supporting outside of that. We're willing, we have the resources to do the work to make a space suitable. We have plumbing, electricity, and other resources, as well as money that we've saved to do such a project. A wise person once said that civilizations have been judged by how they treat their elderly, the indigent, and their animals. And I propose that we make Oregon City the first city in Oregon to do such a project and to have other cities want to emulate us here. I think it's doable, and I think that we would be willing to do it. We just need a little bit of help from Oregon City in the space to do it. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Could I, could I just request, and maybe there's somebody on staff that we can, might, whether, I don't know who it would be, but that she could talk to a bit?
Yeah, I'm interested to learn more about your proposal, and if you are available to meet with me, I'll get the right people in the room, and we can talk more about the details of what you're proposing and...
I would love to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Appreciate it.
I just want to mention someone else is here. Serena Staley is, why don't you wave, Serena?
She's on our call.
Serena, if some of the commissioners may remember, came before the commission last spring and talked about an emergency situation with cats, and I developed dialogue with Serena on this issue. And I think all of the folks who are here tonight are doing really good work on this, and I'm encouraged that we're going to develop, I don't know about that. And thanks for coming up.
Do you want to also speak too? You're on the list too. Serena, did you want to come up?
Yeah.
Serena? Linda Thomas, could you follow too? Thank you.
Thanks for seeing me again. As some of you remember, I was here in April with the foreclosed house and couldn't find any help in Oregon City, and I ended up finding it through PAWS and other areas out of our city, which is very unfortunate for the animals and for everyone in our community. It's very upsetting when you can't find help, and it's very unfortunate when you're trying to be responsible. So I, everything they say, I'm in, and the spaying, neutering, the education, all of it. And I would really hope that Oregon City would consider helping us with some kind of property or shelter that PAWS could self-sustain. And I think it would be wonderful for all of us involved. And there's some really good ideas, so I just hope that it's important to you guys as it is to me and others. I think there's a lot in our community that really are, this would be great. So I'm excited.
Thanks, Serena.
Thanks, guys.
My name is Linda Thomas, and I live here in Oregon City. For the last four and a half years, I have been a foster parent for mother cats and kittens and hospice cats. And between 2008 in February to February of 2010, I did over 126 cats in my home during that timeframe. One of the things that I have seen, because I also go out and rescue, not as a shelter, because I'm an individual, but I've been working with two different shelters. One is Sharon's. And I think that one of the things I see with her is that she needs the space to be able to have more individuals like myself to come in and be able to foster. Not only that, to have more people that are involved with the shelter, that can give her the support and the time and expertise that she could use as well. She's one person, and while she has a number of good volunteers, it's not enough. Just in the past year, less than a year, I have done another 72 fosters, and right now I have two adults from Sharon's shelter at this point. Unfortunately, I am getting ready to move across country, back to where my children live, in Tennessee. But I have told Sharon that because of the things I've done through a much larger shelter, that what I will do is stay in touch with her, help her with building the volunteer base, with training for foster parents and that kind of thing, which I think would help in this area. I can also tell you that as a rescuer of 15 cats of my own, that some of those cats came from my neighborhood, which is in Newell Ridge Estates. And those cats, I'm not sure how they survived the length of time that they did, because I back up to Newell Ridge Canyon, and we have coyotes there. But I do know that the ones I've had, one of them in particular was pregnant, or, I'm sorry, had had a litter. She had not been spayed. I don't know where she came from. My husband and I could not find her family. But there, while there are a lot of people that are having problems trying to support their own families, there are also a lot of people who just look at animals as being disposable. And so I think there's a lot of education that needs to be done, as well as the spaying and neutering. And the more we do that, the better off we're going to be in the long run for our community, as well as the people that inhabit this city. And I have to tell you, I have loved living here.
Thank you very much. I don't think we have anybody else listed? Or just somebody come on?
Amanda St. Thomas.
No, it's Amanda St. Thomas. Yes, we do. Thank you.
For citizen comments? That's coming. Oh, I missed that, sorry.
Hello, my name is Amanda St. Thomas, and I live in Oregon City. I've been an Oregon City resident for nearly 30 years, and over that time, I've witnessed countless animals in dire straits, either by starvation, disease, or injury, and all due to the lack of care by the owner and little outside resources that are available for help to be administered. From a bag of kittens dumped in a ditch, to the feral cat that is doomed to a life of neglect and hardship, to the ones that I've had an encounter with a car, I've seen my share of heartbreak. I started caring for these animals on my own many years ago, long before I knew about PAWS Animal Shelter, which I have been a volunteer for about five years. I started using my own funds or soliciting donations from other caring people to cover the costs of medicine, spaying, neutering, or in some cases euthanasia. Then I would find a suitable home for them, or they lived out their life with me. I'm only one individual, and I have very limited funds and resources, and my family and friends are only so big, and, you know, my house is only so big, I can only have so many cats. But I can only do so much, and I believe that the need is much greater than one person can fill. Very few shelters have the capacity or the willingness to take on orphaned and abandoned kittens, which is one thing that PAWS readily does. I am also one of the foster parents, and I am one of the bottle brigade. I take care of the orphaned babies that can't take care of themselves. Other shelters that are outside the Clackamas County area are reluctant to take any of the kittens, because they're so time-consuming and they're just too much bother, and they really don't want to take on any additional animals to begin with. I feel that it wouldn't, that it would only help the community, and of course, the animals, if an alternative solution to this problem were to be adopted. And I really urge you to support PAWS Animal Shelter in this endeavor. As one of the volunteers, in 2008, I was one of the organizers for a fundraiser that raised close to $20,000 for the shelter. So I know that there are many things that can be done, and various creative ways to do it, and all we need is a little bit of support and, and help from people around the city to take care of this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Dan Holliday, and I live in Oregon City, and I'm the newly appointed or elected chair of the Clackamas Cable Access Board. I have two things tonight. One, a couple of months ago, a property in my neighborhood had become the testing ground for some of the local four-by-four truck drivers in Oregon City. And I called Public Works, and I told them where it was and what was going on, and it's kind of the last thing I thought about. And about two weeks later, three barriers with the little reflective things popped up on the street frontage there that prevents those guys from doing that. So without any extra prodding or poking or anything like that, I made a call and Public Works came down, or somebody came down and erected a barrier that stops that from happening. So I wanted to give kudos to staff and to Public Works for taking care of a problem without having somebody having to chase them down and take months and months for that to happen.
Dan, where is that?
Specifically at the corner of Magnolia and Cascade, in, just down into the Newell Creek Canyon there. My second point is, I am also the chief petitioner for a Clackamas County referendum to put to a vote, the Clackamas County passed an ordinance on the 9th of December that authorized the collection of a $5 registration fee on top of the DMV registration fee, allegedly to pay the county's portion of the Salwood Bridge costs. While it's debatable that that money will actually go to the Salwood Bridge, our point is, is that we feel like that the citizens of Clackamas County ought to have the opportunity to vote on whether that tax should be imposed. And so that's what we're gathering signatures for, is to, is to put that on the May ballot, to let the folks in Clackamas County have the opportunity to vote on whether, whether Clackamas County should impose that fee. So folks can contact me, my email address is OCCommish, OCC-O-M-M-I-S-H at AOL dot com. And I've had that for almost 20 years now. And just in support of a companion measure, Mayor John Williams is in the crowd tonight. He is chief petitioner of a measure that would allow the county voters to vote on either the establishment of a newer renewal area, or the expansion of an existing or renewal area, and we also support that measure.
That's within the county.
That's, that's the county, not the city. And I want to make that clear, because some of the newspaper articles haven't been real clear on that. So John's measure is about, about Clackamas County's overall renewal program. Thank you for joining.
Thank you.
Oh, I have a copy of the petition, if anybody wants it.
Does anybody see any, do we want to adopt the agenda? Are there any things we want to pull?
I have an item to pull from the consent agenda, which is item number G regarding the city commission rules and procedure. I had a chat this morning with the city manager about some of the issues concerning that, and I thought it might be an idea for us to wait until we've gone through the process with the Glazers at the city commission retreat, and see what, what comes of that process and how it informs our working together, and how that, any conclusions or innovations we draw from that process might be a reason to review and perhaps add to or amend these proposed rules, to refine them a little bit as a result of the Glazers process, if the commission so wishes.
I just have a question for clarification.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Don't worry.
If we were not here for the minutes, we can still vote, but we can't make a motion to approve, is that correct? Or...
We can, we can approve, we can approve the consent agenda, having removed this item.
No, 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 I'm talking about the other minutes, November's...
Go ahead and pull it, if you have an issue.
Well, I wasn't here, so can I vote on that?
Uh...
Yes? Thank you.
You can abstain if you want to, but without the consent agenda, I see what you're saying.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're now going into a public hearing phase. We have some charter amendments recommended for us to take action. Before we take these item by item, I noticed there was a memo to us from, I believe, one of the people on your staff, and you, and a memo, and then a report, I think, that was included, and wondered if you could speak to it.
Sure. I don't know whether you want to deal with these individually or as a group, as far as either the report or whatever action you're going to take. Let me just ask you how you want to handle that. I'm sorry.
I was going to respond to, if you make one suggestion, would be to have the city attorney go through the wording of each amendment, and just explain how you arrived at drafting the specific wording.
Going to have for all three?
Yeah, and that'll be the legal description. This commission can talk about the political reasons for, yeah, as for why various commissioners have brought these forward.
Okay. There are three amendments before you, and they're all listed individually on the agenda. The first is the simplest and has the least number of changes, and that would amend Section 11 of the Charter that currently talks about the officers that are appointed by the commissioners. And that is the city manager and municipal judge. It adds the city attorney to that. Inferentially, what it would do would be to remove that power from the city manager, who would otherwise deal with employment issues. This was really the only section of the Charter that had to be amended. I did consider Section 21(c)(3), which deals with, among other things, the powers of the city manager, and, but that starts with a general clause saying, unless, as this Charter otherwise provides. So I think the only amendment that has to be made, if you wish to put in this policy So I think the only amendment that has to be made, if you wish to put in this policy in place, is Section 11. The second set of amendments are to two sections of the Charter, Sections 24 and 32. And it deals, they deal with the election of the Mayor and Commissioners. And essentially what this does would be to displace the current means of election, which is only at the November general election every other year, and replace it with a two-stage process, one of which would deal with the May primary, in which all comers would run and if anybody received a majority of the votes, fifty, fifty percent plus one, that person would be elected. If not, the top two vote-getters would be the, in the general election as a runoff. Now, in order to do that, I had to look at other changes, some of which are necessitated by changes in state law. So in Section 24, I proposed amending subsection 1, which deals with where notices are placed because the state no longer goes to a physical poll anymore. We, I polled, or recommend that you poll, that notice, that each voting precinct get a, a physical notice. I suggested also, using the metro model, that we enshrine in the Charter the current practice, that the offices of Mayor and Commissioner are nonpartisan and that the ballots don't have any political affiliation shown on the ballots. The subsection 3 is the, the dual stages of the election process that I mentioned. And I also proposed amending Section 32, filling of vacancies, to deal with the, the problem of the, of an appointed person. And added to the beginning of that, except as otherwise provided in this Charter, and that would refer back to the changes made in Section 24, vacant elections are filled, vacant offices are filled by appointment, majority of the commission is required, and it says that the appointee's term of office shall begin immediately upon, I changed his to the, appointment, and shall continue until the next general election. I scratched the next general election because of the first past the post and generally left the rest alone, except I changed another his to the. So that's the, the second set of amendments that has to do with elections. The third was the most complicated and required the most work. The desire of the Commission, at least as I understood it, was to propose an amendment dealing with urban renewal bonds and to have those bonds the subject of an, an election. This was difficult because the Charter governs Oregon City. The state law dealing with urban renewal agencies creates a second municipal corporation called the Urban Renewal Authority. The Charter doesn't have any direct control over that Urban Renewal Authority. So what I tried to do to make the wish of the Commission come true was to look at the intersection of when urban renewal plans have to be approved by the City Commission. And I suggested language that said, "No plan shall become effective," which is a requirement on the Commission, unless, and shall not be approved, unless there is a provision dealing with the election for urban renewal indebtedness. I spent some time also in dealing with the current commitments the City has made under a previous Commission, but nevertheless, it's a commitment of the City. And exempted out the bonds that were already issued, exempted out also any financial commitments that the City has entered into by contract. There are two exemptions that were in older provisions, which are local improvement district bonds and refinancing of existing obligations. Those continue as exemptions. So those are the three sets of amendments. I'd be happy to respond to questions that the Commission might have.
A question on the latter. We do have a, an existing line of credit, I presume that's an existing financials. So, okay. This is a public hearing. I'm going to ask the public at this point not to address any of the specific, there's three, there's three recommended Charter amendments here, but if anybody has any kinds of issues with the overall process, if they wish to speak to it. I see a hand in the back and so, is William Gifford already down as a person here to speak? And not, not, we can come to the individual amendments afterwards, but if there's a more general concern, that's what I'm requesting.
My Lord Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is William Gifford and I live in Oregon City. I've signed up for each of the three amendments, but this one is a general umbrella question, and that is, it wasn't until just a few years ago that we stopped having a Charter Committee. And this is, this is an amazing thing that it disappeared in, in light of what's going on now, because the Charter Committee, as I understood it, was to have representatives from the Planning Commission, from the Urban Renewal Commission, from the Chamber of Commerce, from the, from the CIC, and get a broader perspective of how the impacts of any Charter Amendment proposed could have a review process before it just got on the ballot. And I don't know what happened to that process, and I'd like to see it back.
So would I, but are there any issues that exist that we have in place?
There's no legal issue.
Yeah. This, this is, you know, this is coming before the public and actually because of the desire of any of the Commissioners to get this onto the May ballot, it's, it's going through a rather rapid process and so there's a.
Concern is rapid process.
I know.
Yes.
Ms. Nacita, did you want to say something?
I wanted to say something in response and I guess, I guess this, I combined the response to Mr. Gifford to the, the response to staff on the email that came across our computers this afternoon. I don't particularly think that this process is rapid. And the reason I say that is, at least, except for the, the May ballot question, the other two items have been raised and discussed for at least a year in this, in the case of the City Attorney question, and for several years in the case of the Charter Amendment on urban renewal bond voting. That question has been the subject of one and perhaps two petition drives. It has been the subject of numerous letters to the editor. It has been the subject of pretty intense lobbying by citizens to individual Commissioners, and it has been the subject of, of several Commissioners' campaigns.
And on a formal agenda of any of those bodies mentioned?
What's that?
Has it been on the agenda of, on the formal agenda of any of those bodies mentioned?
It certainly has, it certainly has, yes. Commissioner Smith and I brought up the Urban Renewal Bond Amendment last year, and the Commission at that time referred it first to a work session on the agenda, and then the work session, I remember it being referred to the Urban Renewal Commission. And, and then that was on the agenda at the Urban Renewal Commission, and I remember the action that was taken at that time was a suggestion to, to kick it further to a work session of the Urban Renewal Agenda, was just reaching, and it was clearly, you know, a political punt and delay tactic. So at the first meeting of.
It was clearly a what and delay?
A punt and delay tactic.
Punt and delay.
I mean, it's politics, you know, I understand that.
Some would consider fast-tracking it, politics as well.
Well, welcome to politics. I mean, this is a political body.
Sure.
So, you know, the elections matter, the people who have lobbied for this have a Commission majority now. That's, that's politics and elections matter. So to, to say that this is not, that has, you know, has not gotten processed, it has gotten processed. It's gotten a lot of process. It's been not the process of, of a formal Charter Review Committee, but it has, it has been the subject of process and, and very insignificant alternative mechanisms.
I would have thought with your, your desires for citizen input, that a Charter Committee would have been right up there on the top of the list to get things to get done, as a first step.
Well.
Not as an afterthought.
That's, 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 citizen input, I think elections are citizen input. I think petition drives are citizen input. I think citizen lobbying is citizen input. There's been a lot of citizen input on this question.
Petitions didn't make it either, so now there's another alternative.
Yes.
I see, Mr. Holliday, has he signed up specifically for this one? Whether he has or not, please come forward.
Mr. Fowler as well.
Mr. Fowler, and I'll probably make some comments as well.
Okay.
On the same side of an issue before?
This is a terrifying possibility.
It happens occasionally.
It pertains to the Dan and Dan team.
It gives me a quater for the press. What is it about politics and bedfellows? Yeah, there you go. So you want to address specifically the process? And, and I think it's important that we discuss that and, and granted, elections do matter and I agree with Mr. Nacita in that, but I would encourage you as well to not run roughshod over the process just because you have gained a specific majority. I am not certain what the rush is between May and September. And I believe that you could have a decent process, still make the September ballot, and allow that to happen with enough process so as not to generate animosity towards the Commission. The City Charter of Oregon City is our Constitution, and like the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution of Oregon, and it is a, it is a very important document and it should not be taken lightly to change that document. And so I, maybe urban renewal, you can make a certain amount of case for the urban renewal discussion that has sort of happened here and there, but has never truly happened in a public process inside this body. And as far as the elections thing is concerned, the process becomes the same, is, is that we really should have a determinative process, a series of public hearings, maybe a, a town hall or some kind of a community work session to discuss these things before they just get thrown on the ballot in willy-nilly, willy-nilly fashion without the opportunity for the public to have a full public discourse on this. And I, you know, I believe in, if there's somebody who's an expert on the City Charter and it's not me, I'm not sure who it would be, because I can almost quote it word for word. Well, and Ed might agree with me on that. So I would encourage you to step back, think about this, and, and take the time to engage the public in all three of these points.
Did you read my notes? Some of this might be similar, but I believe right, not rushed. Do it right. I'm not a, at all, oh, Dan Fowler, Oregon City, sorry. So do it right, not rush. If you have good ideas, I'm not here to speak on the merits of ideas, but if you have good ideas, they're going to stand the test of time. They will stand the test of time. You have new Commissioners. I think it's a, just a bad process, and again, it's not to say anything to speak of your abilities to be good Commissioners, but to come into a body and then, and in the very first, other than the ceremonial meeting, be talking about changing our Charter, which I agree with Dan, is really quite a sacred document, that seems a little rushed to me. The devil is in the details. To say that, oh, we've talked about these at different meetings and I respect that, and yes, they have been, but until you see the exact language, and until you see the exact wording, and until you see the exact timing of maybe those good ideas, the public hasn't had the opportunity to vet against those ideas. I don't think we've done that. In the own sta, in your own staff report, it suggests, and I don't know if it's caution, but it, it states a fact that it has not received any input from Urban Renewal Commission, Planning Commission, the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, the Main Street of Oregon City, or the Citizen Vol. Committee. That's coming, that's just, that's just cautionary advice or just advice without an editorial against it, it's just the facts. And I believe that elections do matter, and again, and to no disparaging against those that won, and congratulations though that you did, you know, the percentage of winning percent was, was slightly more than thirty-some, thirty-three, thirty-four percent, that's not a majority. The last would be that I do believe in citizen input and citizen process and transparency, and I, I know that a lot of people ran on that. This is not the way to gain the public's confidence in those words. Thank you.
Are there any more general comments in terms of what we have before us in terms of amendments? Please come forward. And if you haven't filled out a card, as you, that, that's all right, we just want to make sure you fill out a card before you leave. You're great. You could introduce yourself and where, whether you're from Oregon City or not.
My name is Mike Bradbury and I reside in Portland, Oregon. I'm born and raised here. I've spent forty years of my life in this community.
Are you from New York, Portland?
Yeah.
Oregon City.
I reside in Portland.
Yeah, okay.
I'm familiar with TIF financing from the construction market. I am a general labor by craft and trade of about nineteen years now. And how I learned about it is working on the PDC projects in Portland, in the Pearl. And when initially started, there was no prevailing wage on those projects, and I'm a laborer, and I was a union laborer, so it wasn't really applicable, but I always questioned as to, isn't this public dollars? How many people in Oregon City know what TIF increment, tax increment financing is? Probably a small percentage really honestly understand the urban renewal process and what TIF financing is, and they're going to confuse it with bond measures that, oh God, we're going to go in the hole seventeen million dollars because we have to pay the river's landfill because it's a blighted area.
I am going to make a request. I'm going to ask you, because you, are you addressing just this one agenda?
I'm addressing the issue of putting every urban renewal project to a vote.
I'm going to ask you, if you would, to come back and we can go through those, each one of them, and I'll, I'll call for the public testimony on a, on a Charter Amendment basis.
My apologies.
No, that's okay, that's fine. A little bit confusing, usually don't do it this way. Any other general comments that apply to all of the, all of the amendments that we have here? Well, seeing none, I guess, I, I would, I would just make a comment simply because James Nacita made a comment, that I don't think the elections that we had this last time indicate anything about the will of the people, and I'll just make that statement, a simple statement. With that.
And thus you've proposed the runoff.
Well, that's true.
Right, which is exactly why.
Well, that's true, but it, it still doesn't, I would just simply state, and we could have a bit of discussion on this general one, this could just as happily, I recommended one of these Charter Amendments. And one of the reasons I did is that there have been elections I've won, and I did not have a, a majority of the vote, so I don't know what would have happened if I had, if we had a situation that was like this, but, but the point is, I could just as easily go on the September ballot as any other. And so, it's just a general discussion, I think the observations are well-taken for all three of them personally, but with that.
Is this when Commission speaks, or do we do that after?
I think we can speak, we can speak on the general topic that has been put forward right now, in terms of the general topic, and then we can talk about the specific amendments.
Well, I would like to follow up with a couple of the speakers. What is your agenda, motive, whatever, to push this forward so quickly?
Again, I don't, I don't consider it quick. I mean, framing, framing, as one of the speakers did, as this coming immediately after the seating of a Commission as being quick, I, I don't see it through that same frame. I, I see. going on, as I mentioned, on one of these matters for at least a year, and another matter for two or three years now. So, to me, it's not a, let's do this quick. It's, a lot of citizens have worked on and promoted this idea. At last, let's give the folks the opportunity to vote on it. The idea that there's a lack of process in having something put to the ballot, I empathize it, however I qualify that with, ultimately, this is going to be the people's decision, so claiming that we're cutting off citizen input by allowing them to vote on something, I, it, I, you know, it's not as.
Well, it is true. We are cutting off citizen comment. We have had very little conversation. I know that I am new to the commission. I've not had a conversation at the commission level about any of this. So I don't know how Commissioner Roth feels, but maybe she's been a little bit more informed. I'm not sure. But I personally, as a seat on this commission, have not had the opportunity to discuss this. I personally thought we were going to discuss this at the work session, and you came back with, I'll reserve my comments until Wednesday. So have you gotten your comments out?
Now, we're not, we're not voting to refer this tonight. This is, the purpose of this meeting is to launch the discussion about it, and refer it, and possibly refer it to the city attorney to prepare ballot title language.
Okay.
So that gives us the process to hear the citizens tonight. It also frankly gives us another opportunity to have another public session on this in February as well. In the meantime, between now and May, the May election, there is a lot of time for having discussions. That's what a campaign is, having discussions in such venues as neighborhood association meetings, Chamber of Commerce meetings, CIC meetings, and, you know, May, I consider May to be, you know, several months away, and that time period being ample time to have a public discussion about what may be placed on the ballot at that time.
Okay, I understand that, but I also understand that our taxpayers have just spent thousands of dollars for these documents to be prepared. That's a lot of money for a maybe. I thought when we were, I thought at the January 5th, when we were sporting, you said you wanted to bring this to the work session. We were going to talk about it at the work session. I didn't realize that our city attorney was already busy at work proposing all this, spending thousands of dollars of our taxpayers' money. And now you're telling me that we're going to talk about it now? Why didn't the city attorney not put that together?
What is there to talk about if we don't have a common document?
Well, I just thought we were going to talk about it at a work session.
But if we don't have.
See what it looks like.
If we don't have a common document to look at, all of us look at the same document, we don't have anything really to talk about.
But we have our own thoughts on the matter to express. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I don't want to waste any more taxpayer money.
Commissioner.
I have several comments on this. I'm kind of open to the discussion about the timeline. I guess one of my main concerns, which has been one of my main concerns since I got elected, was reinstating all of the committees that I think we've done away with in Oregon City. I didn't even really notice the, I mean, I didn't really know to what degree the charter committee existed, but I've been, you know, strongly concerned about the loss of the Arts Commission, the Natural Resources Committee, not to mention our neighborhoods that were decreasing at a pretty strong pace. I've been concerned about that for two years. There was a civil service board, and there was a, you know, so there was all these committees that existed at one time, and, you know, I know that you were concerned about a lot of those committees disappearing, I believe. I have always been, and I still have those on my agenda for, to talk about at the Golds Retreat, because I feel they have to come back. So I guess I'm willing to listen to everyone about the timeline, because to me, you know, I don't know, you know, I'm a little more flexible maybe on that timeline, depending on how it really affects these general topics. You know, in terms of the urban renewal, some of these issues in terms of elections, you know, I could see possibly timeline, but in terms of even the urban renewal issue, even if it goes on the May ballot and gets some of those, some of these projects that are happening right now, it may not affect it anyway. I mean, so I don't know. I'm wanting to hear more discussion about that timeline, and, you know, kind of make a decision on that, but I think no matter what the timeline is, we really have to deal with the larger issue as a city at our Golds Retreat on how to get these citizen committees back. You know, I was very concerned at the direction the city has been going in the past, where it was, you know, a lot easier for a commission to make a decision without asking the public, and that's not the way I want to see it work.
No.
It's not the way I've ever wanted to see it work. So I'm, so I think we need to really address that.
I see, David Mayby, is your concerns about the general process here? Have you listed, or was it a specific amendment?
A B and C.
Hmm?
A B and C.
A B and C.
Please come up.
Separately.
Oh, individually, okay.
Individually.
With that, amendment A.
Okay, I can, this, I've brought this amendment forward, and it's a simple amendment, and it's a complicated topic. I can share briefly how I started thinking about it. You know, obviously, someone who's a political figure has both public policy motivations and individual political motivations for undertaking an initiative. In this instance, I was, what triggered, what triggered my issue with this was my situation in my first few years in office, during which we had a discussion, my recollection serves me, was on a, an element of the Cove Project relating to an access permit on Agnes Avenue and Washington Street, where I had submitted a series of questions regarding the access permit, and found out after the city commission had voted on the matter, that the city attorney's office had prepared responses to my question, and had forwarded the responses to the city manager, and the city manager had not in turn forwarded that, those responses to the commission, neither to me, who had asked the questions, or to the full commission. And I was, you know, needless to say, quite upset about that. And I started, you know, considering the whole question of who the city attorney in a city government reports to, who the, where fiduciaries lie. As people know, I'm an attorney myself. I started asking around with other cities and other city officials how it worked in other cities, and I, when I would go to League of Cities meetings, I would talk about this with other elected officials, and what I'm, there's also been, what I've come to be convinced of is that in a city government where the city commission is the governing body of the city, and where elected city officials are the ones in city government who are accountable to voters, and, you know, if things aren't done right, the only person, people in the city government that really pay the ultimate electoral penalty are the elected officials, that, given the very unique and peculiar nature of legal advice, that within that city government, that fiduciary should be defined as one primarily, although the fiduciary is to the city as a whole, that the main fiduciary should lie to the city commission. And I have heard from other elected officials in various cities, instances where that has been a very significant and key factor in how events have played out in various situations, which I'm not concerned about right now, because I have a very good relationship with our current city manager, and, you know, our city attorney happens to be one of my mentors, so I'm very, you know, on very good terms with our city attorney. But I don't know what the situation in town is going to be five years from now or twenty years from now. So the way I'm approaching this is as an institutional matter and an institutional relationship. Having even minority city commissioners have the right to make an informed argument, which having, you know, legal arguments as part of informed argument, I think, you know, our whole federal constitution is based on, you know, the rights of minorities against the majority. I think, I don't want other members of this commission to be in the position I felt I was in, in my first two years, where the fact that I was a city, a minority on a city commission meant that, you know, it was okay to deny me information or deny me legal advice that I had requested to make an argument on a policy matter. I have heard other, and these are just examples I've gleaned from other elected officials in the metro area, that have given examples of issues that can happen in the attorney relationship. And again, I'm not worried about those now, but I'm concerned about this in a larger institutional framework. I talked to you with an elected official from the city of Canby, who had gone through a really bloody dismissal of a city manager, who just expressed to me the relief he had felt by the fact that in something as delicate as that matter, the city attorney was reporting to, and answered to the city commission and not the city manager. We here, I'll share something that I found quite interesting. We here in Oregon City have had problems with city managers in the past. They predate my even living in Oregon City, but I have, I've had the opportunity on another matter to review executive session minutes, and I'm not going to reveal any, you know, executive session material, but there was an instance where the city attorney's office investigated a former city manager, and it was after the former city manager had left. Now, I think that would have been an extremely delicate matter for a city attorney to be charged by the full commission in investigating anybody, but in particular, investigating the individuals who could hire and fire the city attorney. That would be a very, very delicate matter. I've had people claim to me that in certain instances, staff or can kind of have the city attorney frame legal advice to try to secure a preconceived outcome, because, you know, we're in an imbalance here. The five of us here are unpaid. We typically have full-time jobs. We're in an environment where other people are paid and work full-time and have a lot more time, and so that, we rely on, because we're amateurs and laypeople, and we do this part-time, and on the advice we get. So there's, I've always felt a certain vulnerability in that, in being in that position. So, just as a statistical matter too, and I don't, this is kind of a lesser factor for me, but within the metro area, at the metro level, at the county commission level, and at the city level also, only Oregon City and Tuolatin are the governments where the manager actually has the power to hire and fire the city manager. In every other jurisdiction at those, the city attorney, at every other level, there's, that power is vested in the elected body. So that's, that is why I have been thinking about this and brought it forward, and want the, you know, discussion to percolate in the community on whether this is the right thing to do. But I think it's, I think it certainly merits the discussion. So with that.
Mr. Mayby, amendment A.
Good evening. For the record, David Mayby, City of Oregon City. I understand your concerns, Commissioner Nacita, but the flip side of that coin is that it essentially, to me, makes the city attorney a political poker chip. Just my last year, your first year, the city dealt with a very sensitive issue in Kenema, where the city attorney gave us advice that we don't get involved, we stay out of it, you know, let the people deal, you know, sue who they need to sue, concerning that sewer backflow thing. And I could very easily see that if the city attorney's job was on the line, that people in Kenema could have put forth a candidate, much like Commissioner Roth started out as an anti, you know, Public Works thing. She's developed more than that, but it could have very easily been, we're going to get that city attorney fired, and I don't care how many people we have to vote in to make it happen. So, you know, I'm really concerned about that right now. He can give his advice to whom, you know, he needs to, and he has some shelter behind the city manager in that aspect. If it's a matter of access, then I think, you know, the city commission has the ability to direct the city manager on how the information flow is to be handled. When I was on city commission, we had an issue where one commissioner was costing us tens of thousands of dollars in information requests because he was pissed off. There needs to be some control on that. And, you know, if it's just, I'm your boss, answer my questions from any five of you, you know, then that becomes an issue too. So, you know, I'm sorry you didn't get your information. The city commission should have dealt with that matter, and I think that's the way it needs to be handled, is direction to the city manager as to how information is to be exchanged. And, you know, it just seems like we could end up with, to a certain, well, I've pretty much addressed those big things. I'm just, my concern is it becomes a poker chip, and that it start costing us money, because, uh-oh, now that there's three people who don't like me on the city commission, I'm going to resign now, and now we don't have a city attorney, because he figures he's going to lose his job, so he just bails to go work for somebody else or whatever. There's a lot of problems with that. I really don't care what the rest of the state does as their standards, because they're, you know, we're the first city. So, they're all suburbs of us, so it doesn't really matter.
That's fair.
That's my position.
Dan Holliday and Dan Fowler, I just thought I'd put you together again.
It's just like old times.
This will differ this time.
I got it.
Sorry, William, we'll get that.
Fix it up, fix it up.
Well, I was going to be a gentleman and let you go first.
No, go ahead.
To start with, so it's been 167 years since we've had a city charter in 2011. It started in 1844. And fundamentally, our system of government here in Oregon City hasn't changed much in all of that time. The basic principles of the charter haven't changed much. The basic principles of the charter haven't changed much. We, we made a, a change in the 90s to make sure that Dan Fowler couldn't be mayor for life like Wade Byers in Oregon City.
Actually, didn't apply to me.
So, I, I want to ask, if I might, I want to ask a question because it's pertinent to the, to the thing. When you asked for the information from the city attorney, was that information a consensus or, or even, you know, a three to two vote? So, you know, when we were on the commission, we weren't allowed to ask for opinions from the city attorney without a consensus from the commission and a way for that information to travel back.
Absolutely.
And, and, and that is purely a cost control measure. Because we all know that Ed makes obscene amounts of money and...
Not from this.
Thank you, Ed.
So it is, it is a cost versus majority issue, and, and I have a real concern about that. The, the, the city commission has the ability to funnel the informa, in the case of, of a sensitive personnel issue, they have the ability to communicate privately with the city attorney. They can ask the city manager, because he is their employee, to step out of the room, and you can have a direct conversation with your attorney without the city manager present, and you can direct the city attorney at that point to only communicate with you if there is a sensitive issue. And he is required by law to follow that because, in truth, the city, the city council is his client. The city manager is not.
Can, can I finish your statement after I ask?
And, and at the, at the worst possible situation where there might be a true conflict between the city attorney and the city manager on some issue, there is always the ability to go to the Attorney General or to go to an outside agency to ask for that investigation. So I just don't see the need for this at this point in time. And again, I think it's one of those things that we need to have a much longer, broader discussion of than two meetings and on the ballot in May. And I'm finished.
Thanks, Dan. Before we get to Dan Fowler, Ed, I want to get your opinion on what Dan said about whether you or any city attorney who is, who works under a manager who has the power to hire and fire you, how you could perhaps, both as a legal matter and as a strict kind of employment matter, could say to the person who can hire and fire you, I'm not going to tell you what the city commission told me.
I can do that, but it is admittedly a very rare situation. I'm putting together an opinion right now on dealing with a public records request, Commissioner, that you made, and, and one of the big issues in dealing with that...
Public records request that I made?
Yes, about the Atkinson church.
That's not a public records request.
I had understood it to be a public records request. In any event, the issue there is, who's the client? It's a big issue with the Oregon State Bar, and that's why I'm taking the time to respond to that. The client is the city. The governing board of the city is the commission, and for those purposes, I work for the commission. On the day-to-day level, I work for the manager. When there is a conflict between the two, then I have to ask myself, who's the client? If it is a policy directional thing, you will tell me and I will carry it out. Commissioner, on the, on the particular issue that you raised about the urban renewal agency request, I think that was done while I was out of the room. I don't normally attend those, those urban renewal agency meetings, and I didn't get the notion that you wanted it back. I sent it to the manager, as is my normal practice, for distribution to the commission. So I tried to respond, and I only found out after you told me that it didn't go back to the commission. Okay. But if you're asking who I work for, the client is the city, and then what I have to do is this intellectual determination of who is, who is the city for this purpose? You can, through the charter amendment, take over everything on, in the way of direction. You can keep this, the present bifurcated process, and both will work, in a way of speaking. Both of them have their inconvenient aspects. But I have to make that determination on a case-by-case basis. I hope that helps.
That does, thank you. And thanks for raising that.
Yeah, thanks.
Dan Fowler, again, I would say if it isn't broke, don't fix it. And I, I hear what you're saying about the information flow and incidents, and that's really frustrating, but I think in general, in general, it's not broken to the point of a charter change. It costs money, it costs effort, it costs time. And I think it's a real important point about commission communication and day-to-day communication. And I think, and I've never been a city manager, but I think he wants that ability and that control day-to-day to have that with the city attorney. The, the other couple of points that I would make, and I, I think if there is clarification on, on how many heads have to nod in order to get response, I think that is exactly a consensus and a dollar issue. I mean, it is, and there's a certain checks and balance that you want to achieve in that. And one of my concerns in the charter change would have been, who's your boss? Who's the city's attorney's boss? And now there's five, and do I respond every time, every, no offense, okay, because I've been there, and even when I was mayor, you know, the, you had to have two other people. So every time one of you responds, does he have to respond? And when does that clock stop and start? And how many, I mean, that's a, that's a big, big thing. I just think it really needs to be thought about. And quite frankly, that's the kind of thing that takes a little time. Now, if you can reach a decision and say, this is a bad idea tonight, great. But boy, if you're thinking that's a good idea to do, I want a lot more time to talk about it and flush that out. Again, no offense to the request. The, the other thing, I think you have the power to, to hire and fire your city attorney right now if you want to, because you have the power to hire and fire a city manager.
Or direct the city manager.
Direct the city manager. You can direct him. I think you can direct that city manager and say, you know, I'm sorry, but here's our, here's our direction. Now, he's then put in a little bit of a hot seat in that, you know? So I'm not saying it's easy, but, but I think if you, as a majority of people, had a real issue with your city manager and you gave your ci, excuse me, your city attorney, and you gave your city manager those feelings and that direction, I think he's going to count noses, and he's going to know what to do. Just a guess, but I think he'd know what to do. And I don't know if Damon said it or Dan, but I wouldn't want to put the city attorney into that political process any more than probably are, they already are on issues. So that would be my, that's my comments. I was, I was, thank you.
Thank you very much. William Gifford, Mark Bradbury, will you come forward, please? Mark Bradbury, if you want to come at the same time.
Just as, as a point of information, are we discussing just the city attorney?
We're discussing the city attorney piece.
I'm not standing for any comment.
Okay. Mr. Gifford.
Gifford, City of Oregon City, again, still, and hopefully forever. I just want to underscore particularly Dan Fowler's comments, although he said it so much more eloquently. He said, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. And I would, I was going to say, if it ain't broke, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It's, it's too expensive, it's, it's, it's a waste of our taxpayers' money to even be bothering with this. I think it's a frivolous effort.
Mr. Bradbury, you're going to wait for another one, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was to speak on the...
Yeah, that, I think will be the last one. Thank you. No, it's my turn. The concept I don't have a problem with, though what we have, are listing there is three different positions. The city manager, city manager works for us. Position that exists now is a municipal judge. Municipal judge does not work for us. Okay? And that's the third one, is the city attorney. And I think it is, I think it needs to be clear, I mean, there's, there's a fundamental assumption that the, the city manager is not going to really take much action on something unless the city manager has a consent from, from this commission, at least the majority of it. I'd, I'd like to actually see the charter make the statement that the direction has to be given by a majority of the commission, and that be built into the charter, so there's no confusion about that. We may all agree with it, but if it's not in there, I don't think you have any guarantees that we could have that kind of control of the budget that we wanted. The other thing I wanted to mention that's in the existing charter that concerns me a little bit, because if I read the charter without that provision, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sullivan, but as I, as I read that particular statement, it says, "and such officers as the commission deems necessary." In fact, it almost sounds like we could hire you ourselves, under us, if, if we so chose in the current charter. And that, that bothers me, that, not that we could hire you, but it seems to me you could put yourself in the position that you take all of your management staff and put them under the city commission, and then you have the nightmare that I think the city of Portland sometimes has. And I, I think that, that would be a mistake. And so when I'm looking at this, there's two components I'd like to see. A clear statement as to the relation of the city manager and the city attorney requiring direction from a majority of the commission. Particularly the city attorney, because the city manager operates on a fixed salary. The city attorney does not. And I, for the city attorney's point, we could run into the problem, and I think, I think Commissioner Damon is correct, we have had that case in the past where individual commissioners were asking questions that the majority of the commissioner may not, may not have been interested in, and has run up our attorney bills because of that. And I, I guess I'd like to strike, and as, as other officers as deem necessary, because the implication is that we could make the city manager irrelevant by putting all of the management staff under the city commission, as it's written. Am I correct, or am I reading that?
You could read it that way. The current version of the charter also in 21(c)(3) leaves a default power for the manager to appoint, and you also have a, a chapter in your code which makes the, the manager the appointing power for the city attorney. So you have that combination of things. And you also have tradition. Charter has not been construed that way. It could be.
Doug?
Interesting.
To clarify, the city, the municipal court judge does work for the city commission. Those are the only two positions, the manager and municipal court judge.
The point is, we would not give this judge any direction in terms of the judgments they're making. That, that was the point I was trying to make.
Well, it sounded like the...
No, no. My, my point is, we don't, we don't direct the judge, is my point. We, we might be able to fire the judge, but we don't direct them. And that was my point. Those are the only points I had to make, and Betty, you're on, I believe.
I took myself up because I thought everybody has spoken quite nicely. Thank you.
James Nocita is back on.
Yeah, I just want to add a different take on this question of requiring a, a majority of the commission to ask advice of the city attorney as a cost measure. I think that can be solved otherwise, namely, for example, by allowing an individual commissioner a set budget for asking and not to exceed, because I do, I still believe that even individual commissioners who are a minority need legal advice to make effective arguments, even if that argument is a dissenting argument.
I think I can only do, if I might, I'll put myself on the floor. Betty's come back on. Betty, go ahead.
Well, yes, I would have concerns about that because already we have a city manager who's paid staff, who gets the nod from three commissioners to move things forward. Now we're going to have our city attorney have to figure out, does he have the nod from three commissioners to move that forward, and how much is left in their budget? So I can answer that. I mean, I think that's kind of cumbersome.
No, the, the point I was making is that you wouldn't need the three head nods. Just any, any individual commissioner has the right to ask something directly of the city attorney. That it was separate from the majority question.
Right, it's two different points I was making.
Yeah. I, I mean, we could consider, I, I mean, this making the whole issue cumbersome is something that's not even covered by the charter, would probably could be done through resolution and so forth, that, I, I think it indicates it's a little messier than we thought. I, I don't have that much problem with the city commission hiring the attorney, but I do think it's a majority of the commission that directs the attorney to, to actually pursue something. And I don't know how you budget individual commissioners for attorney's costs.
I don't know.
Okay. Any more comments on this one? Well, with that, now we'll go to the hard ones. Charter amendment for city commission candidates on the May ballot. I put this one forward, and I'll just simply make a statement, the reason I, I put this one forward, I thought, I thought it was a good thing, and since charter amendments were coming forward anyhow, possibly for the May election, I decided to get this one up there. I have no problem with putting this one off to the September election. It would give sufficient time for people that were interested in running for election to make a decision to do so between September and May. So the timeline for it is not a concern for me personally, but we've had, we've had issues where myself, I know, I know the current Commissioner Roth's race, and also a previous Mayor Alice Norris's race, which was a three-way race. There weren't, and that was a very close one for the first and second position too, that, that they didn't have majority votes, and I think this is a way to deal with it. I've suggested the metro method. I think the counties method was a disaster to say, if you've got three, then you put it on May. If you've got two, you put it in, in September. It, it really raised havoc in terms of how it was administrated and so forth. And, and the benefit of doing it is if you have a, if you have somebody that's a clear winner in May, they've got a lot more time to prepare themselves for, for taking the office. And so this is the reason I put it forward, and I'll make no other indication other than So, it's on the floor. And Dan Fowler, this time I'll let, I'll let Damon Mayby sit next to Dan Fowler. No, Dan Fowler's called Bruce.
But certainly there's a requirement that I have a D in your...
Just to keep my consistency tonight, being against charter amendments, I thought I'd come back against this one.
Against charter amendments or against timeline?
Against the timeline, actually. The, well, and I'm not, I'm not for putting this amendment on either, but the, the thing that I would, and my opposition to this maybe isn't as strong as maybe some of the others, but the thing that I would think about in this particular one is to not overreact to one election. Well, and even three. I mean, I, I think that, I was thinking about this, and, you know, we're, this is local city. This is just kind of close to home. This isn't, you know, big statewide partisan politics, primary elections, narrow it down, get the winner. So that's really, that, and it's really citizen-driven, and all elections take time and all elections take money. And so I was trying to weigh the, the time factor, the money factor, and, and, you know, those things. So, and then I, I started to think about, does, does that begin to weigh and discourage people from even voting if they think, oh my gosh, am I going to get a majority? Am I going to do two elections? You know? So just some cautionary notes is really all I had to say.
Yeah, I don't like this one at all, period. First off, it only appears that it's a problem when you're on the ballot, Doug, so...
You gave two other examples.
Wait, 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 well, no, you said you gave two other examples, but were you not on the ballot on both of those examples? So with that being the case, it seems like we actually have identified the issue. Secondly, you know, it, I don't really think it's, you know, that there's anything broken here. I mean, Kathy's was a very close race, but the other two, you know, said congratulations, and they stepped aside, and she's sitting here.
I'd like to clarify that, Damon. I was much further than, than Betty's. She only had 64 votes.
But, but yours was the example he gave, so...
Well, then I, I was much far ahead in the other one, too, but...
But I'm just saying... But I'm just saying, you know, it, it's not a, a big enough problem that me, that I... But I'm just saying, you know, it's not a big enough problem that I think it needs a fix. You know, the other thing is, I really don't want a longer election cycle. I don't want to have to sit through six or seven months of people campaigning for city election. It's already bad enough with 60 days. Next, you have the issue of the lame duck candidate. I mean, we've already seen where commissioners just stop showing up when they're, I'm not elected anymore, it's only two or three meetings, so it's not a big impact. Now we're talking about months, you know? I'm not paid, so why should I bother to show up? I'm not like I'm losing anything. And then...
Then we could appoint the winner earlier.
Which gets to the next issue, which is, I generally don't have a problem with the filling vacancies language. I think that would be useful, I mean, because people could, you know, right now be appointed for a couple of years. But how does that impact against their term limit, charter amendment? But now they're elected. See, before it was unless appointed, but now they're being elected, so does their time start on that? Does that term limit clock start?
No. It starts when they're sworn in for their election.
It's a term of office.
But I'm just saying, if, this isn't, I'm talking about like the big general, but say, you know, Betty quits because she got a job in Nebraska, and so now you appoint somebody for the couple of months until September, when you can now have an election for her position, is that new person in the term limits because they've now taken over the job?
That's not the way the charter measures it. It was eight elected years. It was specifically elected.
And it would be elected in September to fill her vacant position.
I think the city attorney can respond to that.
I don't think there's a problem. I'd be glad to look.
Okay, I just, but it's just one more question about doing, you know, more things. I just, I think, I don't think it's that big of an issue, so...
Okay. Dan Holliday and William Gifford, you want to come forward?
Actually, let somebody else go first, because I have to look at something first.
Okay. The someone else is William Gifford.
Daniel speaking on my own. Oh, all right. I'll...
I put this really separated you two this time.
I don't know. William and I get along okay.
Absolutely. William gets along with everybody. That's easy.
Oh, excuse me.
William Gifford here, Oregon City. Which one are we talking about? We're talking about the...
Ballot. Voting.
Okay. Primary elections. I just had some procedural questions about this, you know? I'm kind of open to the idea, one way or the other, I don't know. Again, I'm not convinced that it's broken, but, and I think the language says that they would be elected. If they have the majority of votes in the primary ballot, they are elected.
But they're not sworn in.
That's correct. That's correct, but they are elected. So now the question is, and maybe it's moot, I don't know, about ethics. Can they, if they are an elected official, they're elected, can they be approached by lobbyists? Can there be restrictions on gifts received?
I think it's at the time of swearing in. I think that those laws kick into effect at the time of swearing in. It's not just the election and even the certificate of election. It's actually when you take the oath.
And yet that could be an additional six months where influence could be...
That's a policy issue that we should direct.
Influence could be peddled for those months. And the only other question that I had about it is the additional expense of the protracted election. So if three apply in November, you know, it's over, it's a done deal, but a whole year's worth, well, several months more, it's like running two campaigns. And I'm not convinced that's a good thing to try to lay on somebody, on a candidate that's willing to serve. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Dan Holliday, City of Oregon City. I'm surprised, because, Dan, is this the current charter you gave me?
Um, I don't know. That might be a...
I'm surprised, because I know that there was a point, and I'll have to go back in my archives and see if I have my book, but there was a point at which the city charter said that you could not fill an appointment, you couldn't appoint a city within 180 days of a general election. So if someone was in the last six months of their term, and they left for whatever reason, got hit by a bus, moved to Florida, whatever, that you couldn't fill that with an appointment, it had to go to an election, and I...
I think it's only for the mayor, and it holds in there, otherwise, unless otherwise dealt with in the charter. He's got the wording in there to cut it down.
I saw that, Dan, and I did, in section 32, the amendment to 32...
Well, my mistake, and so I guess, to get to the technicality, then, if we're going to, you know, if we're going to do this, the mayor, in reality, has no, beyond the control of the agenda, or the minimal control of the agenda, because obviously three of you can put any, you know, if you get three people together, you can put anything on your agenda, that all of the elective rules should apply to all of the commission equally. So if that 180-day rule is in effect for the mayor, it should be in effect for everybody on the commission. And so if we're going to change, you know, stuff that has to do with elections and the charter, then that should be part of that. And the second piece of, the second of the three things is, and Mr. Gifford picked up on this, is cost. And not only cost, but there is also, you know, you're talking about running two campaigns at this point. I am certainly one of those folks who might be sitting up there now, had this, quote, "primary" system been in place, with the exception that I was already in a primary in another elected, you know, race. So I might not have been in the general election, and some of the discussions may not have taken place if this primary rule was in place. And I'm concerned, because I don't see this anywhere else, you know, I don't know of another municipality that does primaries. There are other municipalities that do the, you know, the instant runoff thing, which I absolutely detest. You know, I think having a slate of eight candidates and the top vote getter wins does not, it just does not speak to the will of the people, and I also believe that it causes folks to not have serious debate during a campaign. But that's not the issue here tonight, so I just wanted, this was mentioned someplace along the lines. The third thing about this is, is that if we're going to do this, we need to have more discussion about it.
No worries.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to make just one quick comment. I mean, it is conceivable you could have eight candidates running for a city office, and the top most getters get 25, 26.
Maybe 10 percent.
But can't. But they're great people, get very upset. With that, okay, well, those two maybe less controversial measures are through. I don't know if the next one's going to be more controversial or not, but in any case, I'm going to go ahead and call a break. And we'll go ahead 10 minutes after.
Rocky made a point to me during the break that this item doesn't need a particularly long introduction, because it's gotten a lot of discussion in the community and otherwise in the media, et cetera, for a couple of years now. But just as a brief introduction, this is a measure that would essentially allow the citizens of Oregon City the right to vote on the issuance of bonds for urban renewal plans, projects, and programs, as they do already have the right to vote on general obligation bonds for projects. So that's kind of the short summary introduction of the measure.
So does anybody wish to speak to this one? They've been, all three have been introduced by the city attorney. So do I see any speakers?
They're on the floor.
Thomas, you're first.
Thank you.
Go ahead and introduce yourself and say whether you're from Oregon City or not.
I am Thomas C. Chavez, and I do reside in Oregon City. And I wanted to speak about this particular issue, because I've been hearing about it for the last year and a half or so. I've been a resident of Oregon City for three and a half years, spent seven years before that, just across the river in West Lynn. Very different political environment.
Well put. Thank you.
Not sure I'll take it.
Several, yeah.
But one of the things that I have seen when talking to people on the street, talking to people in coffee shops, talking to people, is in Oregon City, there's a tremendous malaise. There's a tremendous sense that the fix is always in among the people outside of this chamber. And yet, inside this chamber, there's really wonderful, vigorous, heartfelt debate. And what I would really like to see is that kind of discussion, that kind of fighting it out, happen among us all. And therefore, I would say that having an election about such a very, very powerful and fundamental issue, and having that before the citizenry is a good thing. And to push it off, because the people who are politically involved are having their debate, is not as good a thing as it looks from inside what seems to be the political club of Oregon City. There's a lot of varied opinion inside this political club, and there's insiders and outsiders, and they've just, to some degree, changed positions, whatever. But the people who really know what's going on, who really think about what's going on, who really try to get what's going on to change, by comparison to the citizenry, are so very few. And what we really, really need to be the vibrant community that we should be, is to expand the opportunity for others who are working, who are distracted by their children and television and whatever other things, to get actively involved in the same vigorous way that I've seen here tonight. So I'm speaking in favor of putting it on the ballot, not to cut anything out, but to hopefully have this argued out broadly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw?
Brian Shaw, Oregon City. I was trying to get an accurate number here from some historians here, but I'm coming up with a number between 15 and 20 years that it took for us to pass a school bond.
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Twenty years. Okay, thanks. I got it. I got it.
There's no doubt.
Twenty years to pass just a school bond, okay?
Yep.
To get voters comfortable to do that.
Yep.
Urban renewal, very complicated.
Yes.
The Rivers Project, very complicated. Having trouble trying to figure out how the voters are going to interpret this, especially on the, if they try, if it goes, you know, and I'm a card-carrying optimist, let's say that it gets on the ballot, people get to vote on it. If it doesn't go through the first time, Cabela's will be gone, developer will be gone, and a new tax revenue stream for Oregon City will be gone. 1,200 jobs for the state, which is at still 10% unemployment, and for this city, will be gone. So you guys, we have to roll the dice here, and you still have that opportunity. This doesn't have to get voted on. I mean, I'm for voting whenever we can, but this kind of thing here, this, an urban renewal project, and this is why, and correct me if I'm wrong here, I haven't heard anything late in the last few months, because we talked about this, the urban renewal, but no other city, no other county in this state votes on urban renewal projects. That's why, because they're so complicated, and they're usually shovel-ready. This project at the Rivers is almost shovel-ready. And that's why I'm afraid of why this thing is being pushed through so fast, because we're so close to signing a development agreement with this developer, we're so close to breaking ground to having 1,200 jobs available in this city. That's all got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Groner and Damon Maybee, please come forward. Ralph? You want to come forward? Yeah. And Ralph here first.
Thank you.
That's because you were on top of the list.
Some may not know me, I'm very hearing impaired, and it's getting worse since I've been married almost 50.
And you're going to have a headache when you get home.
Yeah, believe me, I was supposed to be there hours ago. For the record, if this is like the legislature where I work full-time, my name is Ralph Groner. I represent a homeowner, and I've lived here most of my life, over in West Lynn, about nine years, the rest of the time in Oregon City. I work for American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees. I think it's important, I'll throw that out. I've lobbied on urban renewal for the past 30 years, and the last session, we had all of us together, the way it works, special districts called me in to their meeting, they were concerned with fire districts, et cetera, money, and understandable, and time limits, understandable, okay? That's not an argument. You may know, or may not know, that all of us collectively, and when I say us, I represent my union, about 90% of the cities in Oregon, and my portfolio, we all have portfolios, tax policy, and all issues relative to the cities, counties, from law enforcement to highways, to water, to sewer, and you probably feel that I'm invisible, but in fact, the League of Cities, when they were threatened on an issue similar to this, to lose their underground utility fee, they asked me to stop that, and I did that. So my mantle is up at the League of Cities, so I'm not your enemy. I want to say...
Well, you're not all of our enemies.
No. I'll read my point, so I'm out of here, okay? Just thoughts. One, be respectful, so I want to be respectful. I probably have deeper feelings about job creation than most, since that's what I deal with. I am a labor union, I face 3.5 billion, and we almost were in tears, five lobbyists today. We really aren't going to be able to solve it, but we're going to, it's the worst we've ever seen it. So I'm going to be respectful, because to delay a highly complicated issue as urban renewal, that we just spent years and years in the Capitol collectively working on, to amend it and make a compromise come that the fire district supported, the special district supported, the city supported, and we support it. Most dependent state in America on income tax, so I'm going to hit income tax rather than property. I see your report by staff focused on property tax revenue. I want to say, we are the most dependent state in America on one tax, the income tax. We're the second highest in New York. Obama made a quote, that whether you like him or not, I'm gonna use it, the fact is, he said, "We're backing the car back into the ditch rather than out of the ditch." I feel that sending urban renewal to a vote of the people, as complicated as it is, is backing the car in terms of me, and what I've worked for through the years, is to make sure you have the tools as a city to work with. The reason, only reason is...
Ralph, Ralph, just up you one second. You used up your three minutes. I'll just ask the commission if they...
I wasn't aware it was a three-minute limit. I'm very sorry.
Everybody okay with more than three minutes? Not three minutes?
I'll go faster. No, no, I'll go faster. I, I'm kinda bitter right now, because it seems to me it's somewhat analogous to current Congress, who promised the public before they were elected that their top priority was job creation. Take a look what they're doing right now. They're arguing about something that's going nowhere, the health plan, because it's not even gonna be heard in the Senate. And so, to me, time is money, and people need jobs. To me, the top priority in the polls, we do polling, the top priority right now is jobs. The Obama, the race in 2012 is gonna depend the presidency of the United States, is gonna be jobs. By the way, it's gonna be jobs for county commissioners, city council, state legislature. It's jobs. And the reason I say that, one neighbor I just lost, in your neighborhood, by the way, right down the one block, foreclosure. My other neighbor, electrician facing foreclosure with three little kids in the local Oregon City schools. My other neighbor works at the mill, and he's working double time just to keep his family afloat. He faces foreclosure, and according to OPB this morning, the fact is, Oregon's foreclosure rate is not going to decrease, it in fact will be increasing. And why are they not? They're construction workers mostly. That's 25% unemployment, they need work, and The Rivers Project in construction is 300 jobs, according to your city. I'm going by your city report, and 1,500 jobs that are permanent. I just finished a book, by the way, that this reminds me of, that it was George Washington, The Life, that's my hobby is history. And he had to beg Congress for money to pay his ragtag army for over two years. No money, no money, no money. And they had to ravage farms and so forth, the American, the British were getting food from people selling it to them. And he went to the Congress, and similarly, people in Oregon City who don't even know how to come to a city council, people who are workers, who are struggling to keep their houses and their families together, and out of trouble with the police, and out of the courts, and out of domestic violence, because they're out of work, and divorce, are struggling to ask you to put jobs in the priority, at least in my mind. I don't want to say more, except that I want to add one thing on income tax. On your city, thank you, by the way, economic development, city, all of you, this may help them a little bit as well. They stated it'd be 25.7 million in property tax over 20 years. I did an evaluation with Paul Warner, the Director of Legislative Revenue, based with Fred Bruning giving me the data on the average salary at his current facilities, and he ended up about 15 million every biennium going into the general fund. That's about 150 million, and it occurred to me, we've also got hotels and restaurants and other institutions going in that'll go on the property across, that's more income tax. Why do I raise the income tax rather than property? Oregon left in 1990, Measure 5, that's the policy issue, and Measure 50 in 98 passed, 3% limit, killing you as well. The fact of the matter is, Mr. Warner says that's a $4 billion deficit from going from 30% income tax pre-90 to 70. We now fund K-12, 70% with income tax, and every time that Measure 50, when, by the way, when inflation hits, you're gonna lose more money, capping on it, cities, counties, schools. The schools under Measure 5 policy can go to the legislature and say, "You must pick up the lost money." That means my parole, mostly ours, probation officers, my correction officers, our police that we represent, are the ones who are gonna be hurt to fund K-12. Right this session, $4 billion new dollars out of the budget. So, what I want to say is, property tax in 20 years is minimal compared to the income tax created by The Rivers and adjacent businesses and growth. So, I, if I seem overly emotional, I want to be respectful. People need work. And I talked to Fred Bruning, and I'll close with this. I like him. I've dealt with hundreds of developers as county commissioner, land use. I carried Senate Bill 100 on the floor of the House. I know, he knows, he was a lawyer in front of me for years. The fact of the matter is, folks, economic development is why I think Hughes won Metro. I think that's why people thought that Congress would do something about creating jobs, and they're gonna lose their seats now, by the way, mark my words, because they're not gonna do any better. So, what I'm asking you is to understand, I love history, I know some of you do. The fact is, Fred said I would wanted a historical, I need a historical anchor, and I told, I have, where did I put that one quote? You make me too nervous. Bottom line, long before The Rivers, I was contemplating what I could do to help develop the history of Oregon City. I don't want to get into the plan, it's come a long way. And the bottom line is, The Rivers is the anchor. And if Fred's willing, under your conditions of approval, to make sure that that entryway and that highway is historical, and it leads to our museum that needs money, with a stage going on full-time with activities, you now no longer have what I think I perceived some people thought was a mall. What you have is a major historical attraction, and I'll close with this. Hillsborough and Washington County did us in with high tech. They did great. We can't compete with those jobs, but we can become the historical creator of jobs, manifesting our history in this region, putting people to work, tourism coming in on the paddle-wheelers, you already put the dock in, I already know what I want in the park where all the Indians came, every year I want to see that, and that won't cost you. I've talked to the tribes, they love the idea, and they would love to pay for that. So there's some things can happen if you put the vision out rather than binders, and all I want to say is that urban renewal should not be the one tool commercial has taken from them, but frankly, we need to keep it, respect it, use it, and the law's been changed through all of us working together, and I hope you would understand, this is critical to the people, income tax for schools and my public safety folks, as well as helping all others who need property tax increase. Thank you.
We've got a request with the city recorder that we have a special 15-minute clock for Ralph Groner.
Actually, before Ralph, you leave, I actually do want to ask you a question and link it to what Thomas Chavez said. I find your arguments very well-spoken and, you know, compelling regarding jobs. But to link it what, to what Thomas Chavez said about getting that argument out beyond the cognoscenti, the, you know, the people who are always politically active to the whole community, I, I guess, I gotta say, I don't see why there's some, why this is all mutually exclusive. I mean, if there's a vote on these bonds for a project like The Rivers, and I think if I have to correct you on something, this, this amendment is not about The Rivers. All right? It's not about The Rivers. But if bonds went out to vote on The Rivers, why wouldn't your argument about jobs be a very compelling argument in a campaign whether to pass the bonds, but allowing, you know, a more democratic decision-making process?
Commissioner, and I, I respect you, I really do, but you and I disagree, and he and I respectfully disagree. City of Oregon City Commissioner, if I were one, and I work full-time in Salem, 17 hours a day, if you wonder why I don't get to come to these, my job is in front of the legislature on these very issues, full-time. The fact of the matter is, we've worked too hard to make, we only have one tool for commercial. I'm sure you knew that. High-tech industry has other tools, property tax abatement. We have, commercial has urban renewal. For me to say, if I were a commissioner and I were sitting there, I'd say, "Ladies and gentlemen, we know you're hurting, you need jobs, we need to stimulate the economy, we're gonna move to The Rivers, to the front of the bar, and we're gonna have our urban renewal commission." You already have a commission, I have no idea how they voted, I haven't even, other than reading the newspaper. So my answer to that is, we need expediting this project done in the right way creatively, with the history of this city. If we're gonna have something like this, if we don't have it, and we have, the voters are gonna decide on urban renewal with some of the arguments I've read, which completely are totally out of line with the revision we made in the law this session, and I know you don't have time, but Gary Cook said he would come in front of you in a work session, he's the one who worked on it, and he, he's the retired urban renewal director, Clackamas Urban Renewal, he'd explain to you what's done, what's required now, and I think you need that. He'd be one who'd love to come work with you on it. So, what I'm saying is that I don't need delays of any kind. People voting on this, when we're elected, and I have been elected, the College Board, never city, county, et cetera, legislature, I think the public expects me as a legislator, as a county commissioner, as a city counselor, to be a leader who fights for them. So when you say we're gonna put that out for bonds, you, you just threw something at me. The fact is, Fred's willing to say, "I'm not gonna take all that urban renewal money." You're already aware of this, if you were at the meeting. But, but the fair point is, the land use that was there, the dump, that's only fair for the city to use urban renewal, because what you're gonna end up with, what really bothers labor, is Walmart. And if you end up with Walmart applying on that property, because, "Oh, we'll pay it all," they are billionaires. You know, if Walmart comes in, you're gonna see us all fight, all of us, for other reasons. And so I'm just simply saying that I would hope you'll show leadership, don't be angry at me. I don't want to sound like a minister. Get people to work as a top priority and forget this, this whole issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To say this has nothing to do with The Rivers, I respectfully disagree with that in one element. Ralph Groner says he has spoken to Fred Bruning. Every member of this commission will have spoken to Fred Bruning, except Commissioner in the seat who's refusing to do so. Now we'll go on to the next speaker, which is Dan Fowler, and then after that, I don't get to talk?
Damon.
I've, I've got to respond to that. I respectfully, that, the fact that I won't meet with, with anybody is my choice, it doesn't have, I mean, my, my views on The Rivers are one thing, my views on people having the right to vote on financing issues, I mean, is something quite distinct from that. I, I don't see what, how you connect my position on The Rivers, which is certainly well-known with my position on being able to grant citizens the right to vote on, on, on major financing of anything. It's just, that's, that's, that's a bit specious.
Dan Fowler and Damon Mayby.
I want to say you first again.
Me first?
I'm just going by the list.
Dan Fowler, Oregon City. Boy, I wish I had the passion of Ralph right now, but it's late. Great, great job. I want to maybe just focus on a couple of things, because on the one hand, I've always been a believer in the public's right to have a voice and to vote. It's just, and I believe, I'm a big process guy. When I was on the city commissioner and mayor, I mean, we didn't have time limits. I'd let people go for hours, drove the commissioners crazy, but I believed in it so strongly that, I may disagree with what you say, but I will defend to my death your right to say it, that's full tier. I mean, it's just, it's just something, so...
You still only have three minutes.
I know. And it sounds good to vote, but the reality is, in certain times, that voting and activity don't mix. And when you put on an urban renewal commissioner's hat, you have to take your city commissioner's hat off. You are sitting as a development agency that is trying to take bad areas in town and make them better. So, to understand the, the belief and the process of voting on, it sounds good, it sounds theoretically good, but in the practical reality of getting things done, it doesn't work well. Because opportunity comes, and opportunity goes. And sometimes we don't have the right, we don't have the chance of all that timeframe in between. When you're elected, I believe you're elected for three things: to serve, to represent our city, and to lead. And this is one area where, when those things come before you, you need to lead. We've elected you to lead, to make those decisions. Make them right, get them right with history, get them right with access, get them right with connecting downtown, get it right with protecting from methane, get it right, but lead. The opportunity's here to do that now. Jobs are here. I think if we, if we have the attitude that this is an opportunity that we need to take advantage of, and work with that attitude, and get it right for our community, then we're all gonna win. That's all I'm saying.
You have 30 seconds left, Dan.
I'll use it. Real quick, I want to jump back to the primaries thing, and that is, I didn't know...
I'm not going backwards.
Well, it uses up my time, that's all. And that is, I didn't even know in time to run for a primary if I was gonna run for city council, so, you know, I would have been eliminated from running, and, and I was chosen. Anyway, um...
Those are, those are Dan's 30 seconds. Now you can start with three minutes of your own.
Okay. Real quick on this, I mean, I, I agree, people need to have choice, but here's a real-life, for instance. "Hi, I'm a developer, I have $125 million, I want to spend it in either Oregon City or Gresham." Gresham says, "Come on down, we've got, we've got the ability to help you." Oregon City says, "We'll get back to you in six months if the people want you to." Why would I come? Secondly, six years ago, when I was sitting up there, we didn't have the money to front the special election. We were debating whether or not we're gonna keep the streetlights on. So then, I'm gonna say, "We'll let you know in six months after you pay to put it on the ballot and run your own campaign." Or you can go to Gresham and just start building, or Beaverton, or Camby. So, you know, irrespective of whether it's a good idea or not, that's the first thing the developer's gotta look at. I'm not even gonna get an answer for four, six, eight, nine months. Maybe I time it right, and it's only a month, but it's still a huge issue. You know, if it's, if it's a question of the citizens being involved, you know, we've restructured the, the urban renewal once, I know, I was on both ends of it, why not, you know, get citizen involvement by making the two, or three, or four, or five citizen positions elected positions rather than appointed positions? Separate the Urban Renewal Commission, and, and, you know, keep the city on it, but just let those pieces of positions be elected. The citizens will have a second opportunity to voice their concerns and opinions to their elected officials in both hats. You know, but as Dan was saying, opportunities come and go. You're a leader, you need to lead. Sometimes the decisions aren't popular. Nobody liked it when I said, "Let's flip the switch and turn off the, the, you know, close the library, or shut the funding up, or let's end urban renewal." But that was my decision as a leader. I felt that was the best representative thing to do. So, you know, you can't put everything the city does on, on the agenda. I mean, at some point, you know, where's it stop? Do we put, you know, Public Works's decisions, everything that they do on it? This month, we'll choose, we'll vote on whether or not they pave streets or repair sidewalks. I mean, you know, it need, you know, you need to say, at this point, this is our job, and we're doing it, and in two years, when I'm up for reelection, you can make your voice heard, or six months, or whenever that election is. Or recall me. Those are all options, but things are kind sensitive.
And the other option is campaigning on a position and having the integrity to do what you say you're going to do. Like putting an urban renewal charter amendment on the ballot, which three of us campaigned on.
Well, and that's, fine, do it. I, I just don't think it's a bad idea in the long run.
I think you could justify a different decision. I think if you wanted to, you could lead and justify a different decision. Dan Holiday and Mike Bradshaw. Mike, you're gonna have your chance now. Mike, you're gonna have your chance now. But you gotta wait for Dan Holliday.
Well, I'll try not to go as long as Ralph did. There are a couple of base issues here, and I think, again, with some process, we could fix this and make it work. But the way it sits right now, I think it won't work, and I would oppose it. And I caution you, one, in the political process, and purely the political process, of putting something like this on the ballot, you are asking, and the ballot title will require a yes vote, okay? And that is the hardest measure to get passed. If you're trying to pass something, you want a no vote, especially on something as complicated as urban renewal, because the human condition is that if I don't understand something, I'm gonna vote no. So, think very carefully about the process by which you do this, because right now, as it sits, you won't pass this. I guarantee it. And I guarantee it not only from just the pure political process, but when you put a machine like all of the trade unions, all of the public employee unions, and somebody like Ralph Groner on the opposite side of your issue, I can guarantee you, you won't pass this. So, if your, if your real decision, if what you really want to do, if your real goal is to kill urban renewal, then stand up and do it. Have the guts to say, three of us say, "We're not gonna use urban renewal in Oregon City." And I would respect that. I'd say, "Okay, fine. You'll pay the political price for that." But that's the decision, if that's the decision, just be honest about it and do it. We've heard some talk about mandates tonight. Well, you two didn't get, didn't run for election, so there's only one person on this board who's on this side of this issue, and she doesn't have a mandate by any stretch of the imagination.
Wait, I'm not clear on your statement that Commissioner Smith and I didn't run for that.
You didn't run for election this cycle. So, you're in, you're in the middle of your terms. What I'm saying is, the most recent speakers, uh, voice from the people, if we look at the positions that the candidates had versus the way the election turned out, two-thirds of the people voted for pro-urban-renewal people or pro-rivers people. So, just by, you know, the slimmest of margins is someone else sitting in that seat. So, I just caution you that if you think that there's a mandate for your position on urban renewal, I think you're misreading what happened in this last election. The last thing is the actual process. If we're going to talk about, and I'm gonna take an extra minute, probably, if you're gonna talk about urban renewal, I believe that you could say, "We will take to the vote of the people a new urban renewal district, or a substantial change to the physical boundaries of an urban renewal district." I would support that, because I believe that that is, that is the fundamental question. But when you start talking about saying that, "We're going to vote on the bonds for an individual project," the earlier speakers are correct. If you have ever worked in the development side of what we do, and I'm an electrician by trade, and I haven't worked for a long time, and I know hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of other guys, electricians, plumbers, roofers, you know, sheet rockers, the whole shebang, who haven't worked for a long time. And if we're talking about a developer, and he has a place, he has someplace else to take his business, and there is some other additional process that he has to go through in order to get this, you know, the urban renewal plan's in place, all his stuff fits, "Oh, but now we have to go out and see if the people are gonna vote for the bonds?" It's not gonna happen. They're gonna walk, and we'll lose those jobs, and we'll lose all that income tax, we'll lose all that property tax. I understand taxing for financing is a, is a very complicated issue. I think the 2009 legislature did the best job that they could in reconciling the differences between the special districts and the school districts and urban renewal agencies. And in the end, the compromise was satisfactory to everybody, and I think us tinkering with it on a local level is a bad idea. I would support the actual, beginning a new urban renewal district, or expanding the boundaries of an existing district, that could go to a vote. The rest of it, I think, I think is a political no-show, and you'll lose big when it comes to Election Day. Thank you.
Mr. Bradbury.
Thank you. My name's Mike Bradbury, and I do not reside in Oregon City.
I know, you said that before.
I'm also a representative of the labor's union, and a labor also that came out of the construction field, born and raised in Portland, Oregon. I fished many a day down there in front of the courthouse off of Catholic Rock, so I'm not a newcomer to this town. I'd like to speak a little bit about referring every urban renewal project to, or that is gonna require obligation bonds to be purchased on the market. You know, I'm not familiar with your numbers in your pool, how much you have in your URD fund right now. I don't know if you have $17 million in there, or $5. But it appears to me that the Rivers project is in jeopardy, because you guys wanna refer every urban renewal district project that requires bonding to go to the vote of the people. I'm not opposed to the vote of the people. I mean, that's the ultimate rule, that's the ultimate power of the people, and give them the ultimate choice, absolutely. But bear in mind that the people are gonna confuse general obligation bonds with tax increment financing bonds. They're gonna confuse those. They're gonna, they're gonna think, "Wait a minute, I'm gonna have to pay for this now, and I wasn't paying for this before, so I'm not gonna vote for this, because you're asking me to pay for something now extra on top of everything else that I have? Now, my energy costs are gonna go up, my food costs are gonna go up, and now you're asking me to pay for another project?" They don't understand that that project is already being paid for unto itself by the property that sits there and the other people that are involved in the blighted area that is gonna be repaired. That's the whole purpose of urban renewal, is to stimulate the economy, to create growth, and produce viable social structures for people to come and do business, and commerce to proceed. You know, we are so stuck in this recession right now, in this state, thank God for Intel Corporation, you know, on behalf of the construction industry, because what they've done for the state of Oregon, if they, they've just given us the entire United States stimulus package to one state, you know. Back to what you're gonna do here, when you throw this to the vote of the people, is you're gonna open a can of worms, and this town is gonna go stale, and you're not gonna build anything in this town, because everybody's gonna shoot it down. I, you know, I've heard some people say some things about electing a board of urban renewal committee. Have those people be voted in. Set up some type of honest and objective criteria in your public comment process, in your urban renewal process, because Oregon Land Use Board, who rules over all this type of stuff, over the city of Oregon City, if you guys make a mistake, you'll be in lube. And, you know, they say that public input is number one. Rule number one is that the public must input. So, you open your meetings, and then you set a criteria within those meetings. If opposition or animus is in that laboratory, you take it to the vote of the people. If there's no animus, then you let the project go, and you let the growth go. You know, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
William Gifford, and is it Nick Roski? If I mispronounce your name, you'll have the opportunity to correct it when you're introducing yourself.
That's right. William Gifford.
Of course, we knew that.
Thanks. But just for the record, I'm William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. And a lot's already been said, and I'll try not to drag this out. I promise I won't drag it out. One is that I sort of regret that this commission does not have a deeper business background. I think that each and every one of you are extremely intelligent people, and know an awfully lot, and are gonna be learning a lot more, I'm sure. But the concept of a business investment, to me, might not be something that you deal with all the time. And yet, from a person who has been self-employed for 22 years, oh, more than that, anyway, longer than that, 28 years? Ah, well, who's counting? The idea of being, of needing to spend money in order to make money is just a very simple fact of life, very simple fact of life. And, and I've heard comment made that, gee, this would be a great project as long as we don't have to spend any money for it. There's just no such thing as a free lunch. You don't get investment opportunities from developers without putting in some money for yourself, especially in an area that is, that has, that is officially declared as blighted. You need to put money up front in order to bring more money in, and that means more The issue has been raised about, "Well, let's, let's make sure that all the citizens have an opportunity to vote on this, and that they all can learn more about." As I think all of you know, I'm very involved in neighborhood associations and in grassroots, and I believe very strongly in the power of the people, very, very strongly in it. But I have to say, when I talk door-to-door, and I talk with people, I have to absolutely understand, and it's hard for me to swallow, that a lot of people just don't care. Do you know that there are citizens in Oregon City that don't know who the mayor is? Don't know who the last mayor was? Don't care who the city commissioners are? All they care about is if they've got money for their jobs, and they can raise their kids and put food on the table. It's not a political thing to them to try to say, "Oh, we'll educate the people in urban renewal, and we'll explain tax increment financing to 'em." I'm telling you, their eyes glaze over. They don't understand tax increment financing. Now, if you say, "We're gonna raise," this is another issue, the difference of types of bonded indebtedness. If you say, "We're gonna raise a bond to build a fire station, we're gonna raise a bond to build a new police station, we're gonna raise a bond to build a library," that's a different animal than, "We're going to, we're gonna pass a bond that is going to build jobs." It's much softer, because that requires additional business investment. It's a very different animal. I heard a past mayor saying, "I don't see the difference between a bond for a library and a bond for a, a bond for a development." Like the Rivers, they are very, very different animals. And so far as campaign promises, do what is right.
William, please.
William. My name is Nick Verosky. I do not live in Oregon City, and therefore, I forget that William goes by William, same as my father's name. I drew my last paycheck in about 1980, and since then, I've had to kill what I eat. And I do know something about investment, and I do know what it takes to sign a paycheck on the front instead of the back. And I, and one thing that businesses do not like is uncertainty. And when it's time to act, you need to know, and sometimes, opportunities come up, and you have to take advantage of them right now. I enthusiastically respect the right of the public to speak, and that is why I'm here. People that want to be heard will come out and speak. People that don't care very well may stay home and not participate. And I have been trying to remember what the measure was that Bill Seismar got passed several years ago that required a, that at least 50% of the voters show up to vote in order for measures to pass, and how much that has cost our school districts, and fire districts, and public works programs in the loss of projects, because 50% of the people did not show up to vote. And how many times you read, "Well, if the rest of the 50% that were missing showed up and all voted no, the project would pass," but those people didn't participate. Urban renewal is very complicated. I've been a developer, I've been involved in tax increment funding. I don't understand it. But I do understand 1,500 jobs, I do understand the jobs created by urban renewal, I understand the income that is brought into an area, I understand that if, that some, that when a major regional shopping center is developed, that there are people who will follow the key tenants, and they will bring prosperity to a region. Cabela's, in this instance, and I don't want, I wanna speak globally about the amendment and the charter amendment, not just about the Rivers, but Cabela's in this instance, I'm told, will draw people from 100 to 150 miles away. It's a regional deal. They wanna come to Oregon, they don't care if it's here, if they're being courted for Hayden Island, if they're being courted for other places, their draw's 150 miles. They don't have to come to Oregon City. Oregon City is not the crown jewel of the Portland metro area, in their opinion, okay? It's a beautiful place. That's why I've invested here. And that's why I participate on numerous committees for the Main Street program. So much very good stuff has been said, and I just wanna offer two more things, and then I'm done. Is that Sir Isaac Newton said that, "For each action, there's an opposite and equal reaction." We spend too little time passing decisions, and the charter amendment is a significant decision. We spend too little time trying to understand what those opposite reactions are going to be, and what, and the charter, I heard denied, has been in effect for 144 years, and that needs examination to determine, it warrants the respect of the examination to determine what those opposite reactions could be to this. The other is a quote from William Shakespeare in Julius Caesar. Shakespeare, I don't know if this was 1543 or 1573, but this is the wisdom of William Shakespeare. "There is a tide in the affairs of men, which, when taken at the flood, leads on to fortune. Omitted, all the voyage of life is bound in shallows and miseries." To put the uncertainty of public education, public vote, before the decisions of a major business will send a communication to businesses that, of uncertainty, and you may miss them. And this is a phenomenal opportunity for the Rivers and Cove projects to create this regional center for Oregon. As I read in the UR status report, one of seven in the Portland metro area, a phenomenal opportunity. It will make Oregon the crown jewel of the Portland metro area, Oregon City the crown jewel of the Portland metro area. Don't encumber the process and cloud the decision-making by a quick decision of a charter amendment that may have unintended negative consequences. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, the last person I have on the list is Tom O'Brien.
Tom O'Brien, Oregon City. Since everyone's gone about double their minutes, and I didn't speak on A or B, could I get 18 minutes?
Only if your last name's Groner.
Oh, okay. I'll change my name. Legally, change my name for me, please. I would like to address a couple of misconceptions that have occurred during previous speakers. And in all due respect, union jobs are at risk on any project that doesn't go through, but there seems to be a misconception that the only folks who are unemployed happen to be union members. I would venture to say that there are significantly greater numbers of unemployed who are non-union than there are unemployed union members. Misconception one. Misconception two, if this were to go forward as a charter amendment, we have repeatedly heard people state that the Rivers project would be at risk. That is totally untrue, is it not?
The commitments are preserved in the charter amendment.
Correct. So, the Rivers would go through?
That's not correct.
The Cove.
No, that's not correct.
The Cove, the Cove is committed.
Sorry, the Cove, yeah. Those existing commitments are preserved.
The Rivers, we have no development.
Well, I misunderstood your communication, then.
No.
Back to the commission.
My, my communication was that existing commitments were followed.
I misunderstood.
Okay.
It's in the staff report.
I think that we are really struggling with an issue of our history. I think that we are really struggling with an issue of our history. And I think that basically, three members of the current commission were elected on the basis of actions taken that a number of us found not to be in the best interests of the city. When the Urban Renewal Commission, which was appointed by a mayor, and by the way, Doug, I want to compliment you on the approach that you're taking to filling commission seats. You're doing what you said in your oath of office, that you would in fact fill the commission seats along all commissions. And I appreciate the way that you're doing it, and the manner in which you're doing it. I think that concerns that some of us have had have more to deal with the fact that without any input, basically, from the 30,000 citizens in this city, the Urban Renewal Commission opted on their own accord, with no influence or input, to increase the bonding indebtedness level from 30 million to $130 million. That set me off on a firecrackers. I think that we can learn from listening to a broader base of input and individuals, and I don't care what side of an issue they're on. But I have felt, and I have nothing against the Chamber of Commerce, I think they do a lot of wonderful things here in the city. But if you look at the surveys that were taken regarding the Cove and the Rivers, William has told me that there are 185 members to the Chamber of Commerce. If you look at the results of the survey, approximately 125 of those 185 members are in fact residents of the city. So if we take 30,000 and we tag off 125 people, we have undue influence of people giving their input for direction in the city compared to the city populace as a whole. And I think that's wrong. I think that the direction should be one of finding a better way, and perhaps, as someone suggested, I think it was Damon, maybe you elect the commissioners for the Urban Renewal Commission in a different fashion. Maybe they should be voted upon. I don't know that the answer is to vote on every single issue that comes up for the Urban Renewal Commission. I think the Urban Renewal Commission has a lot of good members and can use its judgment, that's why we want them there, because they have some business to do, and they have the ability to do research like Kathy does, they have, in my mind, the ability to make the proper decisions if they are given the opportunity to do so. And I would trust them to do that. But we've gone through a historical period of time where all members of the commission, by and large, were appointed to those roles because they had a bias, and I'm glad to see that we're getting away from that. Thank you.
I'm going to just ask, the people that are now requesting to speak are the members of the commission. Does any other citizen have something you want to say at this point? Seeing none, I've got Betty Mum on those next.
Okay, well, I want to say, a lot of great comments, a lot of food for thought. I want to thank everybody for sharing tonight. I have a couple of comments about the urban renewal. When it was originally started 20-some years ago, I thought that's when it should have been put before the vote of the people, not when there's every grant that comes up or every request that comes up shouldn't be put before the vote of the people, because that will hinder development, absolutely. And this commission always has to be thinking what's better for the city as a whole. And compromise is what we do on the city commission and as leaders. We have to learn to compromise. We may run on one platform and say, this is what I want to do, but then, once we get into it, we might find out that maybe that's not the way it should be, maybe there is other ways to look at it and other ways to do it. And Mr. Nacida, you said tonight that you were okay with, that this had nothing to do with the rivers. So I think that if we took our time and put this into a committee, I think we could come out with some great, great ideas. I don't think we need to rush this.
I'm next. You're finished?
Yep.
I'm next. These opportunities that we have, both the Cove project and the Rivers project, are the first great opportunities we've had. I think most of our investments have been property, assembling of properties. I've made some votes that I'm sorry I ever made in terms of properties that were procured under the Urban Renewal District. Some public works projects, which I think were, even though some people opposed public works projects being supported, they gave us leverage for getting funds, federal funds and so forth, to do some major improvements on Seventh Street, on the Washington Street Bridge, actually, the old Urban Renewal District at the intersection of Beaver Creek and 213, and also then on La Guapa. These are the, these two projects, the Cove project and the Rivers projects, are the first two major projects that we've had the opportunity to bring in, that would actually bring in major tax increment dollars to it. The Cove already has a development agreement that's been extended, and so it wouldn't be impacted, but on the fast track that this is, looks like it's going on, there's no doubt that the Rivers would. I personally think if this happens, the Rivers is going to go away. And you may say they're not connected. The fact is, if this goes to a vote of the people in the may election, maybe we could get out there and we can campaign hard and have it, you know, have the bond passed, but the point is, I don't think the Rivers is going to wait around to see that happen. And I think, you say they're separate, they're not separate.
No.
They're not separate. I think this will kill the Rivers project. And the next to speak is James.
Yeah, I just wanted to address something that is really more of a discussion within the Urban Renewal Commission, but since it was emphasized so much, I did want to raise the point. The fact that this or that project is framed as generating jobs, there are multiple ways to generate jobs, there are different economic development strategies available, there are different ways to do things. And I have been concerned over the past couple of years of the way I've seen things framed as this, Project A, were nothing, as opposed to Project A is one possibility, and Project B or C is another possibility. So I just wanted you to emphasize that discussion, that there are multiple opportunities for economic development that are possible in the city.
I have next, Commissioner Smith.
I'm not sure I'm ready. Okay, so, well, first of all, on the other, the other two points, I mean, this meeting's going long and we're not even, I don't know if we're halfway through, but I really appreciated a lot of the comments tonight, which I took a lot of notes because there was a lot of really, really, really amazing points. You know, there's no doubt that this topic of urban renewal and the Rivers are linked. I separate them in some instances, because I still believe that citizens have a right to vote on some of these major, major projects. I also am struggling, so I'm struggling on two positions here. One, my viewpoint on urban renewal, and so in some ways I can keep that separate from the actual Rivers project, and in some ways I can't. And unfortunately, that's just, you know, they've been merged together, so they're So me and Commissioner Mum met with Fred this week, Fred Burning, and it was the first time I personally have met with him. And my reason for that was to kind of talk about, in greater detail, my concerns about this project, the Rivers project. Obviously, this issue was talked about a little bit during that meeting, and I wanted to get his viewpoint on it. And I was actually surprised by the answer, because really, the discussion was, do you want to build in a town where people want it or don't want it? And obviously, you know, this is a process to find out whether the public wants it or not. But, so that discussion happened. But also, putting that aside, too, with the project itself, and I won't go into great detail of this, because this will happen at other meetings, but when Ralph Groner spoke tonight about his viewpoint of the Rivers and tourism, that's my viewpoint. That's what I want to see. I haven't seen it yet, and I haven't even seen it yet from Senator Cal or Fred. And that was my purpose of the meeting, is can we get there? Because my reluctance on the Rivers project itself, aside from the urban renewal issues, is, does it fit Oregon City? Does it have the feel of Oregon City? And can it tackle this broad city issue of how do we fix our tourism problems? How do we fix all these things? I think it possibly could do it. So I can separate those two, but they're still intertwined. And so I'm struggling with how to deal with each of those separate issues. I come from the school world, and so we all want jobs. I asked, I asked this question, yes, this will bring jobs, it'll also delete jobs. And I want to know how we can address that, you know, because there are going to be duplications of product services from building the Rivers. You know, if we double two, we have two movie theaters in town, you know, how does that work? If we have two, you know, so we have trouble struggling keeping businesses, restaurants open in Oregon City, and if we add more, we get new ones, but do we delete old ones? And that's really what I'm concerned with on that. So the job issue, all these things in terms of the feel of the project, I want the discussion to keep going, to see if we can address those. But at the same time, I think quite honestly, I was hoping that the election would tell me more one way or the other what people in the city felt, and I think it screwed me up even more. You know, because it's mixed, you know, I mean, it's definitely, the city has got two viewpoints, very different viewpoints, and part of my mission is to try to figure out really what the citizens feel. And to me, part of that is, the only way I'm going to know is if they vote on it. Because I still feel mixed on what the citizens really in Oregon City want. You know, the prior election to this one was a little bit more evident. I mean, it was, it was pretty much a bigger message than this current election. So, you know, we're, I'm dealing with that in my mind, but, so anyway, that's my viewpoint right now. I, I think the discussion of urban renewal in general has to keep, we have to keep talking about, I really appreciate Damon's comments about, and I actually, Dan Holidays as well, about, you know, restructuring, how do, you know, the district restructuring, the way the commission is put together, I don't know, those are all things that we should be talking about. And I think that, that process, this is the start of that discussion, and I think that's I come from the school world, so I have certain viewpoints against, my, some of my opposition about urban renewal is because of police and fire and schools. Because from my position in that world, urban renewal is not necessarily a great thing. It is if it brings taxes enough back into the city, but you still got to make, Oregon City has to make up a pretty big gap. When we talked about, someone brought up the point of view about 15, 20 years to pass a school bond. How long will it take to pass a police bond? How will it take to do this? I think that was a good point, but I also think we have to realize that my position in voting against some of those in the past, and even some, well, especially the school world, is how is the money being spent? And do we, you know, as citizens, agree with the way the money is being spent? This gives the opportunity for citizens to vote on that. In the sense that we talk about annexations, et cetera, I've always voted down annexations, not because I was against development in Oregon City, but because I didn't feel police was up to par, or the other city services were up to par, and that in fact, that money that has been frozen would have originally gone to those services. So I've struggled with that. I feel that even in the last couple of years, in terms of the services that we're offering the city, we're in a better place than we were two years ago, especially with police. So that all has to be relooked at, too. I think, I don't know quite yet if we're ready, I don't know quite yet if we have come to the level of servicing the current city to where I feel it's comfortable to start developing more. That's my concern with development, that's what it always has been. I think we're getting to a position where we're a lot better off in terms of servicing the current city, and now we can really maybe start thinking about what's the best way to bring new businesses and things to town. I also, though, agree, there's more than one way to do that. You know, how does the Rivers tie in with tourism? If the Rivers project goes away, what are the other projects in Oregon City, or the other ways, what are the other things that we can be doing with? So we can talk about that more. Anyway, future meetings will talk more about my more in-depth viewpoints on the Rivers. But I just want to thank everyone again for all these comments tonight, the former commissioners, former mayors, that brought up points that I felt were really valid as well. So thank you.
Commissioner Mum.
I think we can also, Commissioner Smith, do the, talk about the survey again, too. At one point, we had talked about doing an independent survey of the citizens of Oregon City to see if they were in favor of the Rivers. That would also be a way to figure that out. And then, Mr. Commissioner Nacida, you had said something about jobs. How would you, what would you suggest for jobs and tax increments, if there's other ways to do it besides urban renewal? Do you have anything else?
I would direct people, for one, to Commissioner Roth's economic development strategy paper that you distributed to the campaign.
And so, I guess, I'm not sure now, is that something that is like, we're going to take that on as the commission?
That's a really, really big discussion. And it's almost 10:30.
I know, but I would like to kind of know what you're thinking for other jobs and tax increments, just kind of what your thoughts are.
I think we can gain jobs and tax increment by developing our historic downtown. I sent out my commissioner communication last night, where I, the third section of that communication dealt with the presentation that was made to the city commission by the planning consultants, Crandola and Bula, on how a regional center retail complex could, you know, 100,000 square feet in the downtown area, achieve the status of a regional center. That would create jobs, that would create economic development. And, you know, it doesn't, would not have the risk, I think, that some of these other projects would have. I mean, a lot of people are concerned about the negative effect that the Rivers would have on our downtown. If we focus on downtown as the retail center for the regional, you know, the regional center designation, that obviously would bolster downtown, not from the risk of emptying out downtown.
So you don't have anything concrete?
Come on, Betty.
No, 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 no. Do you have, like, something that you're thinking that, like, it's ready to go?
Yes. Yes, I do.
That you've talked with?
I do. I have, I mean, I think Mr. Arambula laid that out with specific detail.
Okay.
On how to proceed with that.
Okay.
I think that can be, I mean, that is something that is, to use somebody's term, shovel-ready also.
Good. Thank you.
I guess I'd like to respond to that. I don't know why you can't do both, and so I don't understand the issue there. But based on my two years on the commission in that specific area we're talking about, which is in fact a brownfield, which is in fact a dump, which in fact is our gateway to Oregon City, and nothing you said would change that. The only two job models I heard involved a plasma incinerator and a natural gas production plant. Those are the two alternatives I ever heard from you. In terms of tourism center, I'm all for it. I have no problem with the downtown urban renewal program looking at that area as a tourism center. But I've also heard statements, well, look, this, you're going to have, from this Rivers Project, you're going to have a lot of minimum wage jobs produced. Tourism is primarily a minimum wage job producer. That's the case. On the other hand, there are millions of people in this country that can't get minimum wage jobs now, under this economy. You, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about Commissioner, Commissioner Roth, she wasn't here. The two commissioners, one to my left, immediate left, and one to my right, have opposed the public opinion survey, which could also indicate whether a project like the Rivers should proceed. You can put a survey that's unbiased, there's no reason that you couldn't do it. But they weren't interested in proceeding. Their answer was, the opinion in the election will show what direction we want to go.
Yes.
Well, it sure as hell didn't. So, the movie theater, I'll tell you, I've gone to see a couple of movies at our Oregon Cinema thing. The parking lots are almost empty. That's not where people go to see movies anymore. They don't go to those, theaters turn over, and it's just not a heavily-used theater. It was when it first opened up. For all we know, it may be the same movie company that builds there and actually employs more people because they've got a better site for it than they currently have.
We don't know that.
We don't know that.
But I'd like to know that. That's the point.
But the point is, the point is, we could probably find that out if that's the group that we're coaching.
I haven't found out yet. I'm trying to find that out.
Yeah. But I'll tell you, I should have gone to a couple of movies at Bridgeport Plaza.
It's their biggest theater.
They're hard to get into. I mean, that's the kind of theater you're going to have there. If you have, if you have a theater that has a lot of people coming into it, you're going to employ more people. I went up to, I went up to see True Grid. They didn't have anybody at the ticket booth. You had to go inside, and the same guy was selling popcorn and was selling tickets. Not very many people were employed there.
What time of day are you going to the movies?
Night. In the evening. And True Grid was a popular movie. Carlene was watching there. So, you know, some of these arguments, I don't doubt at all that some businesses in Oregon City might suffer from this. But the fact of the matter is, the kind of center that you're talking about at the Rivers, my guess is, the rental price of those leased facilities are probably going to be five or six times of what you're going to pay in downtown Oregon City. Maybe once in every three months, I'll be able to go to a restaurant that's located at the Rivers. Whereas, once every week, or more often, I'll eat down here in the downtown area because I can get good food and have money I can afford to pay. So I don't think that's an argument. The point is, I think if this goes forward, this could buy Rivers, period. Especially if it goes forward in May. Tender up. Juice or up.
Well, I want to clarify one issue, and that is that this Commissioner, or I believe any other Commissioner, wants urban renewable to go away by enacting this amendment. I do not believe that that is at all the purpose of this amendment. I'm certainly for urban renewal, and I can see using it in other areas. One thing that I don't, I found in my campaign was that, and I personally knocked on over 800 doors, that doesn't include the people that campaigned for me, they wanted a voice on issues and bond issues in this city. They do not feel like they had a voice for the past eight years. They didn't feel like they had representation from previous commissioners or the mayor. And most of them, that I had spoken to, had never heard in any of these talks that that site is an archived superfund site. That means it's a nasty place, folks. I'm a scientist. There is no way we are going to build on top of that site and have it not affect something. It is not migrate, it is not going to stay in that spot because we have clay. That stuff is migrating across the street into the rivers everywhere else. That is, I don't know if any of you ever saw Aaron Brockovich? We don't have quite as nasty a stuff, but you have no clue what is in that site. Do you want to be putting your children out there to play on some little theater parking lot or whatever, in something that's like that? Do you want that methane with those big pylons being pounded into the ground up through the area? We're not just talking about methane, we're talking about heavy metals, leads, all kinds of stuff that are in that site. It doesn't get to be a superfund site on no little, on a whim. The other issue I have with this is, I do want to keep my campaign promises. This is what I heard in my door-to-door campaign, and I also did a mail-back survey that I got several, well, almost 100 of them back. And I think that's good representation, good representation out of the ones that I gave out. There were less than 10 that said they wanted that project to go forward. They wanted a voice in urban renewal. Both of those questions were on my survey. They wanted a voice, and they didn't want to reverse. That's it.
Well, now we're at.
Well, now, we'll just discuss where we're at.
We still have the rest of them.
I assume that we're not making any decisions at this point, the discussion area. Do we want directions to how we proceed?
I have one proposal. One that, you know, one maybe of many, but I think one proposal, looking at the timeline that Mr. Sullivan gave us, something finalized as far as ballot title language was, had to be done by the 16th?
It has to be done by the 16th. My internal schedule had it to come before you on the 2nd, so that you, if there was anything in the final analysis that you wanted to change, we could have that time.
Okay. But could that also work through a work session between the 2nd and the 16th?
Yes, it could.
And given that schedule, I think one idea might be, would be to continue this to the February 2nd meeting. I would like that because, as other people have mentioned, there have been a number of very good and significant comments tonight, and I need time to absorb all that and reflect on it. So, these are really, really big issues, and I think that it would serve all of us well to be able to reflect, hear from constituents, talk some more, and come back and make some decisions on ballot title language, voting on whether or not to move these forward and continue the discussion on the 2nd.
Okay, we will place it onto the agenda on the 2nd. We've got several items yet before us. I'm going to ask the city manager if any of these, which of these are time-sensitive, which should we go through at this particular time? I believe that one of them has been, a suggestion that's been withdrawn.
If I could just talk to them real quick when we introduce it.
Oh, okay. Our staff member that was going to present item 7A had to go home because she had a daughter that was ill or something, some family emergency to go home. So she's no longer here. We'd like to carry that over to the next meeting if that's possible.
And I guess, just real quickly, just want to say that we've, we received a, we were awarded a certified local government grant from the state Historic Preservation Office for a historic survey in Oregon City. And I'm just going to kind of give you the brief highlight of it, is that we hired a painter preservation and planning to assist us with that process. We're going to go through and update existing surveys for 86 listed landmarks in the city, and we're going to do a reconnaissance-level survey of about 1,575 buildings in the city that have not had a survey done on them. There'll be a couple of the things that we'll do along that, through that process as well. We hope to bring this back to the city commission early summer, June. Timeline is what we're looking at, to bring this back to you with the results of this survey. But I did want to point out that we are going to have an open house to, on this survey, open to the public on January 25th. It'll be from 6 o'clock to 7 o'clock here at City Hall, for anybody in the community who's interested in coming out to see that open house. And we'd be happy to bring this back, have Ms. Robertson Gardner here to make the formal presentation that she was going to at a later date if you'd like.
Item 7B is the second reading. There probably won't be the amount of discourse on this, and I suggest then we go ahead and proceed with the second reading of ordinance number 10-1013, adopting a new chapter of Oregon City's municipal code to authorize exclusion for public buildings. Staff?
This is something that was prepared last year. It deals with difficult persons, more than difficult persons, threatening persons who appear in public venues, and provides a process for exclusion with notice, with an opportunity to be heard and appeal. At least, I think the public safety folks thinks this is a good idea. It avoids problems on how to exclude otherwise, because there's an ordinance in place and a process in place. And I recommend that you adopt it.
City manager, anything else?
I concur.
Or the chief?
The chief concurs, so.
I concur.
If you want to hear more from us, we'll talk about it.
We've heard a bit about something that the county's doing, and it's a little bit, I think, problematic than what we've got before us here. Do I have a motion for the second reading?
I move to approve second reading of ordinance number 10-1013, adopting a new chapter of the Oregon City Municipal Code to authorize exclusions from public buildings.
Second.
Sorry, second. A roll call, please? Not a roll call, a vote, please.
Commissioner Mum?
Yes.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacida?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Okay, then I believe we've had the consent agenda, we had the one item polled. What item was that?
G.
G.
Item G has been polled, and we have a vote on the consent agenda minus item G.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Can we have the vote, please?
Commissioner Mum?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacida?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Smith, no, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nacida will be polled G.
Yes.
So, you go ahead.
Oh, I mentioned my reasons when I wanted to pull it at the beginning of the up, you know, the agenda. I just think that we should take advantage of the retreat discussion with the Glazers.
Okay, so we're going to hold that over till probably, we're February.
That would be February.
Okay. Communications from the city manager.
Thank you. Well, I'll try to make this expedited. When we started the meeting tonight, a few hours back, there were some folks talking about a cat shelter and how the city might help, and I invited them to meet with me, which I am hoping that they will contact me to do that. If not, we'll try to reach out to them. One of the things I encountered when I first started working for your city was this promise that a prior commission made, that I think we all feel beholden to keep, which was that we wouldn't start new programs for a certain period of years, given the fire annexation. Well, as my understanding, we still have two years left on that. And so what I'm going to try to do is creatively look for ways that we can help them or influence others in government to help them, based on what I can learn from their program.
Yeah, I just want to maybe clarify on that. They're not asking for money from the city. They're not asking for the city to run something like this. What they're asking for is like a vacant building.
Yeah.
Or something. And Ms. Murphy was specifically saying that her nonprofit organization has the funds.
I heard.
And wants to, you know, not ask funding from us, but.
It sounds like they have a plan. It sounds like they have some details, but I didn't get all of those. I kept hearing that they need space, and that can mean lots of things to different people, and I just think I need to know more and try to find out more, see what we can do to help. I'm sorry.
I would also suggest maybe contacting Cloquamis County and seeing what they're doing with their old dog shelter area.
I've done that.
And.
And what they're doing is demolishing it for a new jail.
Oh.
They're storing stuff in it now, but it's.
If any of you have information about what you think other entities around here, like research like that that you've already done, that you might think would be helpful to us to try to influence other entities to provide space. If we don't have space, we will look for that. But then I'll, also, I'll get more of the program details, and I'll do my best to try to do something to help, because it's clearly a valid thing.
Something I think you should know too, when he says they have money, they specifically mentioned that they had money for all their utilities and everything too.
That's great. That's great. It's good when they come with a plan that, you know, that they can try to help. So I wanted to mention that we'll be doing that. Then also, it was amazing turnout this past weekend in the rain for this bridge event. I just want to say a special thanks to all the city staff and volunteers on both sides of the creek, and I say creek with some deference to the Missouri River one. Because it doesn't look like a creek right now, does it? It's a little joke between myself and the mayor.
Just because something's wide doesn't mean it's got more water.
That's true.
What was the name of the bridge that you were on?
The Oregon City Bridge. I have that right. And it also says Oregon City Bridge when you're coming in on 2:05, my morning commute.
Of course it does.
ODOT has that right, per our commission, so that's good. And speaking of ODOT, I wanted to ask Nancy Kay to just briefly talk about this wonderful grant award that we have received. Now, it brings us to an excess of $2 million. She and Lloyd Purdy went to the Oregon Transportation Commission and testified today before them in Salem to try to firm up our position for the remainder of those grant funds. So I want to give Nancy an opportunity to give you a real quick rundown on that.
Thank you, Mayor Neely and Commissioner. As you probably recall, about a month or six weeks ago, we learned about a bike-ped grant from ODOT to improve the intersection at 10th and Main Street in the amount of $266,000. Since then, we received $144,000 from ODOT to do the first phase of the two-way circulation on Main Street. And ODOT surprised us at the bridge rehabilitation ceremony with a check for $1,073,013. And that is.
I tried to cash it, but it doesn't have a routing number at the bottom.
And that is for, to work on downtown, on the Main Street sidewalks. We have, this is much too small for anybody to see, but we've carefully, very carefully scoped a project, working with the Downtown Association and the Main Street Association and the many businesses in the downtown, to identify what's a very sustainable project for downtown Main Street in terms of sidewalks, street lighting, and what is the desire of the downtown, as well as what can we provide, in a very cost-effective manner. And the last piece of news is that we are shortlisted with very good potential for being funded for another $900,000 for downtown Oregon City through ODOT's flexible funding program. And that's primarily been, the Oregon Transportation Commission was looking for projects that were beneficial to connecting different modes of travel, and really focusing on bicycle and pedestrian access, and livability, and sustainability. So in those, it's very easy to make the argument that if we improve the infrastructure in downtown Oregon City, basically, the walking platforms that we use for sidewalks, and to provide much safer pedestrian crossings at the elevator and at 10th Street, and do the things that we're proposing, we will be sustaining the downtown Oregon City, which is the first incorporated city west of the Rockies. So it's not only, it's good for the existing businesses. What I've heard from the downtown is, please fix up our streetscape so we can attract new businesses and keep our existing businesses. So we're very excited about this. And we would be, we'll be starting on the traffic circulation work in about eight weeks, and then the other, other part of the project, if we get all this money, we'll be able to actually fund everything between 5th and 10th. And that includes between the elevator and the bridge, and 10th to McLaughlin. 10th, and that includes between the elevator and the bridge and 10th to McLaughlin, on 10th Street, between Main and McLaughlin. So it's very exciting, it'd be a real facelift, and it would be done concurrently with the bridge. So basically, we go through a lot of construction with hopefully lots of positive spirits and, and partying along the way, and come out with this fabulous, gorgeous downtown.
Nancy?
Could I ask a question about that? I, I would like to see and have a discussion before the city commission on the status of that project, what the designs look like, how it fits into other planning efforts downtown, and I'd like to see if that's something that we might schedule for the first work session in February.
What are the other planning efforts that you're interested in seeing? I mean, I kind of want to be prepared to address those other.
Parking.
The parking study.
Circulation study.
The, the, the planning recommendations that Crandall or Ramula made, et cetera.
Out of the circulation study?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so if we could have a work session item on that for the first weekend, or the first meeting in February, I'd appreciate that.
I don't know how tight we're going to be up in our work session.
I don't know. I, I would like to have some flexibility to just get that on as soon as we possibly can, instead of being committed to a date when I don't, haven't talked to the rest of staff.
There was some concern that a couple of things were brought up for having on this meeting.
Right, we push things over and.
Putting on the next one, and we knew this was going to happen.
When, when, when would the soonest that construction would start on all these improvements?
Well, the two-way, the two-way traffic on Main Street, we are hoping to be working on that in about eight weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that depends on the contract. And then the, we, we have 90% drawings for the Main Street sidewalks. It's fair, it's a fairly simple, it's not a big fancy design, it's not, it's something that is affordable, it's replacing existing sidewalks, it's matching what's there.
I have an idea.
And, so, but it's, there's 90% drawings that are ready for viewing. We've shared them with the downtown several times, so it would not be difficult to, in terms of construction, sidewalks probably wouldn't, they're very, very earliest for starting sidewalk, what could be next summer, probably later than that.
If, if the commission would like, what we can do to, to move it along a little quicker and still get you information, I could ask the Public Works Department to provide a short explanatory memo and then copies of those, copies of those drawings and any of the planning documents that go with it, and we can transmit those to you electronically. You can take a look at them, and if you still believe there are questions or you want to provide us some input, we can get that on, on a calendar.
That sounds good.
As soon as possible.
I'd appreciate that.
So that you, basically the bottom line is you want to get it in there in time to have meaningful input if you want to have it, right?
Yep.
So we'll just accommodate that, I think. That's no problem. Okay, so then the last thing is that Dan Dratlaw wants to tell us a little bit, or tell you a little bit about a training touring opportunity that'll be occurring in our downtown. Dan?
Yes, some of your commissioners were here when we talked about the Development Opportunity Grants, which was a, a grant we received from Metro last year to look at designs and market feasibilities, feasibility for two of the sites downtown that Urban Renewal owns. And one is on Main and 10th, and the other was on 12th and Main. And as a, as a partnering, partnering effort with Metro, Metro has arranged for an expert in retail leases and marketing and real estate to give us a two-part, I guess I would say, training opportunity. One is a lunch, a lunch at Cypress, where she would talk about just some of the theories and, and best management practices for running businesses, leases, and, and retail, retailing. And then followed at a, at a later date with a tour of some Main Streets. The location hasn't been decided, but some of the options include North Mississippi and Portland, and possibly a Main Street aggression. We're looking for areas that have similar rent structures as does Main Street in, in downtown Oregon City. And this is also targeted for the downtown businesses, too, so we're trying to get as many downtown business people, as well as you and the Urban Renewal Commission, to, to come to this training and the tour. But we're sort of restricted on the dates, so what I want to do is run a couple of dates by you, and we're also restricted, unfortunately, has to be during the day because we're going to talk to some of the merchants at their businesses, too. But if, if you have some preferences, the dates we're looking for, for the luncheon are February 16th, which is a Wednesday, February 17th, Thursday, or, or February 18th, which is a Friday. Those are the luncheons, the options. And then in terms of the tour, that would be in the afternoon, and the options for that are March 9th, that's a Wednesday, March 10th, or March 11th. That's, those are Thursday and Fridays. So I could follow this up with an email to you, and I also want to extend the invitation to the Urban Renewal Commission to see if there's some interest. But I would like feedback as soon as possible on, if you have a preference on those dates.
Sure. That's great. Thanks.
Have, sir.
Okay. I've got to follow up on some of the activities. The, the estimate of when the, this event on, on the bridge was sponsored by the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, which is seeking to have the area, as I understand it currently, between Clackamas River and Toowalt River, including the Falls area, listed as a National Heritage Area. Am I correct on that?
Well, it's been.
It's not, it's not specifically been defined exactly, but it's the general area. They had that event, the estimate of people going through during the event time was 800. I feel that more than 1,000 pedestrians were before and after that event, or, well, I don't know if they were allowed on before the event, but many people were crossing after the event was over. I went down the elevator at 1:00 and went back up at 4:30, and the elevator operator there had tallied the statistics for that period of time. There were 70, 750 riders. Some of them are going up and down. Point is, all the parking spaces were taken downtown, so there were a lot of people getting from Main Street. We had a lot of people from, I don't know, that were interested in this thing. It was a great, it was a great thing. Regarding the monies that we've received here from ODOT, I wanted to make a comment. Personally, and I think staff would say this if they felt they could say it, we've been frustrated by ODOT on many, many occasions and many of the things that have occurred here. This has been a tremendous partnership. It's going to be very inconvenient, but they've really been over backwards in terms of trying to find funding, which they are doing, to help us on our Main Street. And I never had this happen before, but I had posed the question earlier on in terms of whether we could have a stop, a stoplight on the bridge that could be activated by buses, because it's very difficult for buses to get across and so forth. And the, I think it was our lead man, Rick Keane, is that right? It was the lead man of the ODOT that has been working with us on this, and he wrote this in response to my query. I'm, I'm going to ask you to include it in the next packet as to why it would be problematic to do that. My guess is that at least Bus 35, which is one I use fairly frequently, that used to go across the Arch Bridge, during the, during the brief closure they had during the evaluation period, they actually directed it over the Abernathy Bridge on 205, and they never brought it back to the Arch Bridge once the Arch Bridge reopened. My, my guess is TriMet's probably not going to use it, at least for that run anyway. But they, several, apparently several of engineers went through and looked at that question, and for me, satisfactorily answered it. So, I think ODOT has done a great job in working with the city on this particular project.
Mm-hmm. I would agree.
And that's all I have to say. Any other reports?
Do you have an appointment?
Do you have an appointment to make?
Oh, having said all that, I have some appointments to make. The confusion that came up with Mr. Mayby withdrawing his application caught me by surprise, but then I realized that I had, in fact, signed an appointment letter, but the announcement for Damon Mayby to be on the planning commission is being made now. So you've been appointed, do you want me to withdraw the appointment?
No.
Okay. And then Zach Hankin was also appointed. All of these were recommendations from the planning commission and a part of a review process. Those two were delayed simply because there was a person that was not able to make the planning commission meetings for the interview and came in later. So we have those two appointments being made. The planning commission then, since you're not requesting, you're withdrawn from it, is now fully functioning commission.
Yay!
And.
That's a biggie.
You, you all are done, and, you know, people think this is late. When that guy backed in.
That's right.
This was nothing. I bet you I was on five meetings that went for three more hours when he served as Mayor of Oregon City. So you guys on the field, please, we are, we are adjourning to an executive session.
We have a couple more comments from commissioners.
Oh, excuse me. James Nocita has something to say.
I think Rocky was.
Actually, this is commissioners, you need to sign up under commissioners.
You're, you're, you're on there, too.
All right. Commissioner Smith?
In that case, Rocky Smith is the first one I see. You're welcome.
Okay, I just wanted to say something really quick. The bridge event, you have to say something about that. It was, it was awesome. It was, I mean, I knew that there was going to be a lot of people there, but even I was surprised with the weather. I actually drove from Olympia for two hours and then drove back to Olympia. So I came Oregon City, I wouldn't miss it. I, I just, I was so excited about this event, so excited about this project and the work that ODOT's doing. And you know what? I got to meet some people from the other side of the river, and they're not that bad. I think it was, it was just a lot of fun. In fact, I, I stayed the entire time until there was not very many people left on the bridge, because I just didn't want to leave. It was, it was such a cool event, and I think Lloyd said, Lloyd Purdy said this, and maybe a couple other people, wouldn't it be great to do this more often? You know, that link between the two cities that don't often link together too much. And I, I just found it a really unique experience and kind of a historical event, and I just, it's a, it's a huge sacrifice for both communities to make, to close that bridge, but it's going to be so worth it. So I, I just feel excited to be able to be a commissioner during the time that that project's going to happen, because it's, it's really, it really means a lot to me. So thank you to everyone that worked on that. It was well done. And then, let's see, what else did I want to say? I don't know. It can be another time. This is a long meeting.
Okay. I'm just going to say, you know, most of the time we have conversations with West Lynn. It's during the Civil War between the two high schools.
Right, right.
And we don't want them crossing our bridge.
But we have a new mayor, and so this next fall, we're going to actually beat West Lynn for the first time in eight years.
Well, maybe if we change our strategy, invited people from West Lynn to cross the bridge, maybe we'll win.
Or to play on our team. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll get, I'll get a reaction at school for that part.
That hurt. Just a lot of people know I have a cracked rib. And I wasn't supposed to laugh or cry. Thanks a lot, Rocky, it hurt.
No problem.
And James Nocita, Commissioner Nocita?
Just two items, oh, actually three. Mayor Neely appointed me to the, as the representative to the Willamette Falls Heritage Coalition, and I'll be attending my first meeting of that group tomorrow morning.
Very good.
Secondly, I had lunch today with Commissioner Ann Leininger of Plaquemines County. She's been meeting with a couple of commissioners, city commissioners, and my conversation with her focused on whether the county might be able to help us out as far as sites and land for some of our facilities' needs. And she was encouraging, made no promises, but encouraged me and, you know, having the city continue that conversation. And I'll, I'll be doing that with her and with other county commissioners as well. Third thing, I'm glad my predecessor's here in the audience for this comment, regarding our 40th police hire today.
Yeah.
Chief, Monday morning, I woke up to NPR and heard a story about Camden, New Jersey, and how they were laying off half, almost half, their police force due to budgetary concerns. And it has continued to impress me and even amaze me that, that the city, in this recession has been managed such that during these times, we are actually adding several police officers. And I just want to give credit to everybody on staff and my predecessors, who made a lot of tough choices that have put us where we are today. And, and in particular, our chief for building that department like, like he has been. It's, it's really, it's really a credit to the city.
Thank you. Any more, any more comments? Any more reports? We're going to adjourn. We're not coming back, but we are convening an executive session under ORS 192-662B to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. So you guys get to go.